All right, good evening. It is 6:00 PM. It is Tuesday, August 26th, City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order to acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me if you can for our invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the beautiful weather. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this great community. Just pray that you'll be with our conversations and discussions tonight, that you'll just lead in God and direct us in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole, will you call?
Councilmember Carroll here. Councilmember Myers. Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Gosian.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Streitman.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion that we rearrange our agenda tonight and cover item 8C1 while we've got a crowd here.
So moved second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 8C1 is a resolution proclamation, Resolution 2025-10, Malcolm M. Burgess Plaza. And if everybody's, well, let's vote on it, I guess, sorry.
Right.
Is there a motion?
Motion to, call for the motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We didn't waive the reading tonight, so I'll go ahead and I'll read this one. Malcolm, thank you for joining us tonight. Glad you're here with us. So this is a resolution honoring Malcolm M. Burgess and designating the intersection of Ocean Boulevard and J.C. Long Boulevard as Malcolm M. Burgess Plaza. Whereas Malcolm had moved to the Isle of Palms in 1957 and served on City Council from 1979 to 1980, as mayor from 1980 to 1981, and is a member of the Accommodation Tax Committee from 1999 to 2022. And whereas in 1972 Malcolm co-founded the Windjammer on Front Beach with his brother, James Burgess, creating an iconic gathering place that has defined the character of the island for more than 50 years, and putting money back into the business through the years even as he lent a hand to many employees and others in the community. Whereas on the day of Hurricane Heather on the 21st of September 1989, Malcolm remained among the last to evacuate the island, foreseeing extensive damage to the Windjammer. Though the storm inevitably changed the island, the club reopened less than a year later, overhauled and expanded. And whereas as a Navy veteran, Malcolm has supported the Isle of Palms Veterans of Foreign Corps Post, VFW Post 3137, ensuring that local veterans have a place of fellowship, and he has invested in the island's youth sponsoring children's sports team at the Isle of Palms Recreation Center. Whereas we, the City Council of the Isle of Palms, wish to recognize and honor Malcolm Burgess for his years of public service, support the island's youth and veterans, and his many contributions to the business community and cultural life, and now therefore be resolved that the mayor and City Council of the Isle, City of Isle of Palms do hereby designate the intersection of Ocean Boulevard and J.C. Long Boulevard as Malcolm M. Burgess Plaza. Be further resolved that on his 26th day of August 2025, the City of Isle of Palms affirms its gratitude to Malcolm Burgess, celebrates his legacy as an entrepreneur, and honors his impact as a City Council member, mayor, and community leader. Malcolm, thank you. We will have a plaque that's in production, hopefully in the next few months, that we will have an unveiling and a ceremony out at the plaza. So Malcolm, thank you for being here and thank you for everything you did for this community. All right. All right, we will move on. Next item is citizens' comments.
Mr. Slatchiver.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I believe most of you know me, I'm a resident of the island since 1996. I was the city attorney, prosecutor for 15 years. I was most recently on the beach ad hoc committee. And what the committee did, as you know, is we studied different alternatives, things that we could do to plan ahead to protect the beach, things to do in light of the fact that we have renourishment problems, we have significant erosion problems. You know, we discussed things like groin, we discussed different types of things that we could do in that with governing bodies up and down the eastern seaboard. At this point, only one of those recommendations has been implemented, although many of them are in play, and I'm not judging, it just takes time. But I'm here today because I'm concerned, and I'm concerned about the current status of the beach. We still, right now, the erosion's as bad as it's been. I moved here in 1982 when I was in high school. I came back in 1996. My family's still here. I was here during Hugo, and I've never seen the beach look as bad as it does right now. And I'm worried about it. We still have two cycles, as I see it, before we can do a beach renourishment, and we're only at the beginning of the hurricane season, and it's pretty awful. And one thing that really concerns me also is when you look at the beach, and I've been up and on the beach, you see it's not just the north side, it's the south side, and it's spreading. And I think that we need to look at implementing some emergency funding again. I know that's one of the things that's coming up as a topic for council, to talk about what to do as far as the houses and the structures, and I'm asking that that's one thing that you look at today and that you do implement. I think that in light of where we are, and I've seen all the literature and the articles about the different beach towns around here, it looks like we're the worst. And I think that with the governing body in Columbia, there's a good chance we can do some alternatives that we haven't done before. There are some sandbags that are allowed in some places, these 2,000 pound sandbags instead of the 1,000 pound sandbags. Maybe we can do some of those things, but whatever it is, we need to protect the beaches, we need to protect the access, because our beach doesn't look good right now, and it's not very accessible in many ways right now. I saw YouTube video earlier today, and it was a pretty good expansive view of the north and south, but it was also done at low tide, not high tide, when everything's pounding against the homes. So I'm here today to ask you to implement new sandbags, implement new protective measures for several reasons. Number one is the right thing to do. You know, at the end of the day, we are one island. We're not broken into districts. So when you look at the projects we've done in the past, the drainage projects, it affects some people, it doesn't affect all people. But we're one island, we all pay for it. Right now, we've got, we've got homes, we've got structures that are in deplorable shape and very, in danger. And if the storms continue as they do, and if we don't protect them, we're going to start losing those.
Mr. Slatchiver.
When we lose-
Your three minutes.
When we lose them, I'm worried about property values, I'm worried about tax income, I'm worried about revenues that we use, that we will lose because we won't have them. I, okay, I'll wrap it up.
Go ahead.
Thank you for all the work that you've done, and I know you're working hard to do it, but I think that we need to create protective measures until, and really Band-Aids, until we can do the next renourishment, whenever that is. We haven't even applied yet. I know there's a reason for that, but at the same time, we're still a long way away, and probably two hurricane seasons out. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Stuart Coleman.
I'm Stuart Coleman, 10 Live Oak Drive. I'd like to thank Mayor Pounds for meeting with me and my neighbor Barbara Kahoon regarding some traffic control issues facing the residents of Wildwood Subdivision, which is off 41st. These are issues we've been working on, and we wanted to get Mayor Pounds and the city to get involved with us. During our meeting, we discussed that the drivers on Palm are accustomed to seeing these crosswalks that we now have containing the red decorated brick with wide white lines and a yield pedestrian pedestal sign as they drive along Palm from 21st to 41st. These are clear road markings easily seen from a distance. However, once you turn right on 41st, the additional road markings stop. Cars speed up with little intention to stop for pedestrians who are waiting in the crosswalk. We would like for the city to have consistent crosswalk markings and signage, and to include the crosswalk at 43rd and Palm with the same road markings and the yield pedestrian sign in the middle of the crosswalk. In our meeting, we also addressed the issue of vehicles running the stop sign at 41st and Wildwood Road. Several other neighbors joined in a letter campaign to the SCDOT, and that's a U.S. mail letter campaign per their request. These signs, these stop lines are badly faded, and we asked for them to be repainted to draw attention to the stop signs. The mayor stated his team should be able to make the necessary contacts to move this request along. After our meeting on August 13th, Mayor Pounds sent an email on Friday, even though he's out of town, that the stop lines had already been painted. The mayor also stated that his team was working on the issue of the crosswalk signage at 43rd. The following Monday, he notified us that his team has worked on, with SCDOT, and advised us they have a plan to upgrade the crosswalk at 43rd and 46th as well, and to do it in stages with the DOT completing the striping first. Then the city would complete the red brick, say that hard, red brick portion with the police department providing the yield for pedestrian signs. This is a wonderful example of cooperation among the various members of the City of Isle of Palms government, from the mayor to his staff and to those at the Department of Public Works and the police department. I want to thank you all for listening and acting on our behalf to improve the safety of our citizens.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name is Jimmy Bernstein. I live at 13 Bee's Foot. I've spoken several times before here, and I don't really have much to add, other than I want the council to know that I recognize everybody's effort and concern and what you have done. I think, though, that today, as Dan has, we're in a different situation where we're very challenged. And in speaking to the Columbia people, Rupee and Myra, I think that we've talked about new ideas, and I think we all have to sort of expand our horizon to what we can do to protect the beach for everybody. The advantage I have is I live right on the beach, and I see all of the people who make this their destination and the enjoyment that they can get from walking up and down the beach. With the Shoal Renourishment, I can tell you, it was a pleasure coming out of the house and being able to walk the length of the beach at most times during the day, as opposed to before the Shoal project, the beach was almost unwalkable the major parts of the day. I look up and down the beach and see other people who have been grandfathered, who have structures that certainly protect their property and, as well as the beaches. And I don't want to just focus on the, I do want to focus on our beach, which I think that everybody, that goes without saying, everybody wants to preserve. And I've come here, I've attended the meetings, I just didn't want to be a person in the audience. I wanted to come up and say I think that we've got serious considerations and problems. I know money is a tremendous obstacle. I wish we could employ the state and get other means of funding, and I hope there's an effort to rally the forces, because I think there's a lot of talent and a lot of good thinking. As Dan has pointed out, I think there have been many ideas that are out there. I just think we need to think of new ideas. We can't just look at the past. I don't think we can look at regulations that are outdated and don't apply, that we need to expand on, and I don't know what the impediment, or why we cannot sort of change some of that to our advantage. So I don't want to take up the time, because I think it's obvious to almost everybody. I know many people have seen my property terribly impacted, and it gives me concern every minute of the day. But we're all here, and just wanted to speak up and say, I want to participate, I just don't want to be a listener, I want to be a doer, I want to contribute if I can. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Jimmy.
That's all.
Thank you. So we've got a couple of presentations. First is the Waterway Boulevard Flood Barrier Project Cost Update. Thomas and Hutton, Rick is here from Thomas and Hutton. Douglas, anything to?
No, I would just-
You want to relive the last four months of your life with-
Well, I would just tell you that later in the agenda, there is a discussion of specific phases of this project. I don't know if council wants to do that, reorder the agenda to consider those.
I think it would be helpful, just why don't we do it while Rick's here?
Address it.
Yeah. So do we need to make a motion?
Not yet.
All right. So thank you. I have a few slides. I knew Douglas gave you, I think, an update last time. I'm sorry, I apologize for not being here. I was out of town that last time I would have been here, but while this happened, Douglas and others have been working very hard. I know the mayor's been helping to get this project going. And just to give everybody a little bit of background, just to make sure you understand where we are and what has been done to date. So the three major outfalls, of course, have been done. The berm at 25th Avenue, and then a CV is a check valve, is what we call a one-way check valve at 27th Avenue, has been installed. So those are all going to become part of the Rear Island Barrier System, Protection System. So moving forward, we have a three-phased, what has evolved into a three-phased plan. It's kind of evolved because of different things. So Phase 1 is what we're calling the Wild Dunes Harbor Course Title Flood Mitigation Project. So this is a project and a plan to be done in cooperation, and at the same time, the Wild Dunes Harbor Course is under renovation, which is under renovation right now. So there's, time is of the essence there. So the design is complete. It's all within the Wild Dunes renovation footprint. So we kept it within that footprint for a very specific reason, because that would, that allowed the permitting to go a lot easier. Since it was already permitted to be disturbed, we just piggybacked on their permit. So that is, they were gracious enough to let us use their permit mechanisms to get this done. We bid the work. We received three bids. I believe there's going to be an award recommendation coming up, so there's an award pending. And then a second, second request is to purchase the check valves for that portion of the project, because the town gets, the city gets a discount from the distributor that we are using if you buy it directly rather than through a contractor. So just to give everybody an update, it's kind of spread out from 30th Avenue up to, you know, Sparrow Drive. The red is golf course paths that we're using to provide the barrier. So they'll be raised and then repaved, so as part of the project. The green is berm areas. So again, we'll take up the grass and all vegetation, we'll regrade it to a certain elevation, that, of course, is to elevation seven, as you guys all know, and then re-landscape it back to make it good. So all of this is inside the footprint of Wild Dunes. And then as part of that, we're doing some drainage work. So the black represents, we're putting in some new drainage lines, some down here on the eighth hole between 30th and 31st. That helps, that is because we, there's an older line in there, but it needs to be upgraded. Some near Shady Lane, that's going to be tied into a system when we do the Waterway Boulevard work. There's some piping behind the houses there, and then some at the very far end up towards 41st. We are going to be asking, and Doug's going to bring this in, the, there's an opportunity right now to use the contract with the contractor that we will select to do some additional work, to extend the protection to three more homes, and then almost close in a certain area. So 3107, 3109, and 3111 could be brought into the plan right now as a change order to the contract they're about to award, using the contract mechanism we have, using the costs that we've established. It's conceptually designed, like I said, it can be done, you know, we're proposing it as a change order, and then similarly to what we did for the Phase 1, we're going to order the check valve separately to get a discount. So that is in this area right here, between 31st and 32nd. So that closes in that hole in that area. So it, you know, very timely that we could do this. And then Phase 2 is what everybody's been waiting for, of course, is the Waterway Boulevard pathway. So the Waterway Boulevard pathway, title flood mitigation and drainage improvements are designed, essentially complete. I call it 95%, but anything in permitting, you've got to leave it kind of open, because just in case anything happens. So we're in permitting. We've already been reviewed once by every agency. The costs that we give you, the check valves, are not broken out. They're included in the cost, so just, you know, we are accounting for them. And then it is partially funded by a grant that the city already has. We have made a pivot recently on permitting with this. There's a critical area permit that was needed for one outfall, and we've separated that from this project to streamline this, and hopefully get this one to under construction sooner, and we don't have to wait on that, that other critical area permit. So the gray, light gray, is the pathway that is in the project. So it's from 21st all the way to 41st. The black is drainage upgrades, and so you kind of see a, let's see if we have a pointer. This is that critical area impact right here, and we built the, in between it with the golf course job, and so we're just tying into the golf course job and making it all work. But that might be the holdup, so that is coming out of the project, and it may be done in time, but we don't want it to hold up the entire project. This, this also ties into some work that we're doing on the golf course, so that will tie into there. And then these red dots are check valves that we're going to put on existing systems to seal off everything.
Rick, could you just explain that one, in the middle, one more time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. What we were doing and what we are doing now.
Okay, so there is, so this would be a complete system with a pipe that goes across the golf course fairway. That pipe's being put in as part of the golf course work, Phase 1. And then when we come back, we're going to tie some drainage improvements along Waterway Boulevard. This is kind of a low spot, kind of water sits, and it'll improve the drainage as part of the overall project. But the outfall is into a critical marsh, so that's under the jurisdiction of the DES, the Department of Environmental Services, used to be the old RCRM. That permitting process is very lengthy. To start that process, they require you to have the right to do the work. Isle of Palm doesn't have an easement for that quite yet, but it's imminent.
So what is the, what's been the holdup, or what is the, what, I think that's been in works for about a year now?
Yeah. While the owner of the property is, we've had to work very closely with and through a lot of different things, getting releases, you know, getting the easements drawn up and signed, and they have to go and review them. So it, yeah, you're right, it's been in the-
It shouldn't, is there something more going on for it to take a year to get an easement for this project, which has been known, or is there something else?
Rick, I would, I'm probably closer to the easement question than Rick.
Yeah.
But that is, that is something that we have been working with the local representatives of the ownership of the Wild Dunes Golf Course. They, they obviously have a structure above them. They've been very positive about, they have assured us that they feel positive that it will get, the easements will get granted. It's very similar to the easement that we have, that we crossed the golf course at 30th several years ago. We have an existing easement agreement for that easement, and we have, we have been kind of asking to get that executed and back, but it, you know, I'm thinking that they have other priorities. I don't know that it's getting, you know, immediately to the, directly to the owners. So there's been a lot of kind of groundwork with the local representatives, and we just haven't been able to get an executed copy of the easement back yet. It's been, we have been in conversations with them as recently as today. We think that they have had meetings as recently as today. So we expect to have those easements, and we will not execute a contract to do the work unless we at least have confirmation that the easements will be granted.
Even Phase 1 work?
Even Phase 1 work, because Phase 1 work has to eventually get across the marsh, and this is really the place that it has to happen. So, so all of this project hinges on the easements crossing the golf course.
It's while we're on that, I have a question about, on the Phase 2 permitting that you're doing, does any of the permitting, is any of the permitting required to do the actual walkway improvement?
Yes.
Okay.
That's generally under the jurisdiction of the South Carolina DOT. It's a right-of-way, so we have to get an encouragement permit.
So, not to confuse the matter more, but we, our grant is a timeline on it. By February, we have to be completed, I think completed, right?
That's, well, we have to have-
Started or completed?
We have to have their, so the grant is for 900,000, 980, I think. We would have to have that amount spent documented and in for reimbursement.
So completed.
So the 900,000, not the entire-
Oh, I have you. Okay. But my question is, is that, do you expect that the permitting process is going to jeopardize that timeframe?
No, since we separated the critical area permit from the pathway project. So by taking that out, everybody else would have held up their permits until that critical area permit was issued. But since that's not part of this project, we took it out, then there's going to be no holdup there. We, we're fairly confident, we've already had one review by the DOT, we have one review by the county, we've had one review by the Bureau of Water. So there's kind of like those three agencies look at it, and then they, you know, we talked to the CCC guy, and he, he would have been the guy that would have held it up mainly if we were waiting on that critical area permit, but we're not. So we're fairly confident that we'll wrap it up real quickly. And we were kind of, you know, we had to, a lot of stuff was moving, a lot of parts were moving, you know, this, that, and the other. You know, it's become very clear now of the path forward. So I'm confident, Doug, Douglas and I talked about making the deadline for February.
And Rick, can you talk, you've touched on most of the pieces. Can you just hit on 21st, 22nd, 23rd Avenue, what we're doing there?
Right. These are, you know, so there's existing pipes in 21st, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, and then this is a pipe going to the top of a ditch. So these are the kind of remaining outfalls that need a check valve. So if we didn't have the check valve to prevent the water from, when it rose, from going up the pipe and into this area behind our barrier, we would still see flooding from a tidal event. So these will be put in as part of the pathway to seal out. So those are just going into existing pipes already.
What about the, I understand that's preventing tidal water from coming in, but we also have issues in some of those areas with rainwater or water building up. Does it, has it improved the ability for the water to also to get out?
It does not really improve the ability for the water to get out.
Rick, the, well, the places that we know have been problematic, that we asked Thomas and Hutton to add to the project, are the black, you have, you have a number of those along the path, specifically between, really between 21st and 24th.
Yep.
Those, those black squiggles there are new systems that aren't, that aren't currently there, that will help those areas. And then you have the same thing between 31st and beyond 32nd. Those are brand-new systems that would be collecting water, taking them out where we don't have them, where we don't, do not have them now. So there is additional work contemplated in Phase 2 that's just adding stormwater infrastructure to areas that we don't currently have it to help facilitate-
That's in the scope of this work right here?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So it will help getting rainwater?
It will help get it off the ground and into the pipe and head it out, out, out the, but the valve itself doesn't do that.
No, I'm just talking about the scope of work will also improve- No, I'm just talking about the scope of work will also improve water from getting out as well as from getting, kind of a dual there.
These were the really bad spots in that December event where the water just stood to be, on the, on the rim.
In this weekend event.
Yesterday.
Yeah.
Well, as far as the 22nd Avenue in Waterway, across the street was Old Dangerfield Property, and they split those lots up into four different lots. They hauled in a lot of dirt, appeared on the other side, on the Waterway side of Waterway Boulevard. That was several years ago, and then that's what caused the flooding on the other side of 22nd. And so you're saying that this work will provide those homeowners in there some relief? They built up this grade on the other side of Waterway.
These guys here.
Yeah, right on, right on Waterway, yep.
You know, there's still an existing pipe here that is not getting upgraded. So the capacity going out is going to be the same in this area, but we're, we have more surface drainage to get the water into the pipe and head it out. And then we preserve the storage in the pipe by having that check valve. So there's a little bit of a protection, so it is going to get better.
Is there enough capacity there? For what we've seen in the volumes? Or do you know that?
You know, we have not done a full dive on those systems, other than to know that, you know, where they are and how much they got, but it's going to be better.
And Rick, your red dots are the new valves we're putting in, right? So one, two, three, four, five, to be six, right?
Five in this one, and then in Phase One, there's something like eight or 10. There's one, if I could go on just to, then there's a Phase Three, of course. There's one section that we are not doing due to its fairly complicated measure right now. It's conceptually designed, we have, we've updated the concept based upon some of the things that we've learned from contractors and, and, you know, more modern costs and stuff. So we, we do have a fairly updated cost estimate to that one. But just to bring everybody, this is along 3607 through 3615, and that's to close in. So all of this is done in Phases One and Two, all this is done in Phases One and Two. This area is left to be done. This is the most complicated part of the project. This is going to be a, some type of wall, so that's brown. And then the cart path that goes along the back would look to be similar to what we're doing to the cart paths in Phase One, and just bring it up to that, and then it's a pipe underneath it to provide drainage going out. And then these would have check valves on them also. So that's conceptually designed, planned for, that'll be the next phase, but it's not, you know, it's not designed, being permitted or anything like that.
So Rick, what, what if we do Phase One, Phase Two, but don't do Phase Three? What's the, what is the upside, downside for the...
There, you're this and a half a foot of protection, so the pathway is getting up to elevation, you know, of six. So there is a, you know, protection, but it, it doesn't get up to the full seven foot of protection.
So is it, can it get around from the areas that we did before to the...
It actually would, yeah. But if it got above elevation seven, right now, it can start coming in at elevation like four and a half. So you're getting, you know, the pathway is giving you protection up to six.
Okay.
This would give us protection, that other foot up to seven.
John, yeah, John, was your question though, Rick? I think, could the water come in from the intercoastal and kind of shoot through this area if we don't protect it? So I don't mean to put words in your mouth.
It, on some, you know, some events, some, the more extreme events, yes.
I would, I would just add that, that natural existing terrain is, is right at seven across Waterway Boulevard. So you wouldn't have, there are parts of this project where it's very low, and it gets deep into the interior of the island. This happens to be a section where it would certainly get, you know, into those, the underside of those four or five houses. It would also get into Waterway Boulevard to an extent, but it does hit higher terrain in this section across Waterway. So it doesn't have that, that effect of just going, you know, six blocks into, into the island, where other parts of the project do have that effect.
Would the flooding be similar to what they experience now, or would it make it worse? That's the question.
It would be, it would be same or less.
Okay.
Well, less, because the path, the people on, on the out, you know, they, you know, if they don't do this, these people won't get anything, so they don't always have what they have.
And we're not going to worsen it, the flooding, we're just not going to help it. Okay.
We're not going to worsen there. And then if this gap, this is coming up slightly, so this area is going to get slightly better in the pathway project. But this area and these, these folks could get really good control if this happens.
Okay.
And then there's, there's the cost. So the first, Phase One, Wild Dunes Golf Course, tidal flood mitigation, so we've received the bids, we've got three. We've, we've selected a contractor that is the most, the most responsive lowest bidder. Their, their bid is 1.27 million for the Phase One work. And then again, we're buying the check valves for them, they've, in their bid, they're going to be responsible for installing them, so we're just going to buy them, deliver them, open them in. That's another 59,000. So those two are, we have that 59 is a quote from the vendor, so, you know, again, those are all hard costs, you know, ready to go, ready to sign on dotted line as soon as we...
Do you know what the original estimate of that was?
Right about in there.
Okay.
Right.
Maybe within a few thousand.
Right. Now, I will tell you, there was a, we did, we did start down the line and negotiate with a, with the contractor doing the remodeling, and they gave us a much lower, kind of like, back of the envelope cost. And now I don't, you know, I don't know what, why theirs were so low, but then, you know, they were, they were told by the ownership that they couldn't work on it because they're not doing so well on their renovation project. They had to focus on the renovation project. So again, this, this has, we've got to bring in another contractor, we've got a little mobilization, it's a little bit different, so it does add to the cost, but this was the cost that we estimated two, three years ago.
This is Phase One?
Phase One cost.
Yep.
The entire project, too, is within the budget that we gave you guys two, three years ago.
Okay, because I think Phase Two for us, and if I'm adding this upright, we got, what, 4.3, 4.4 million roughly for Phase One, Phase Two now?
Yeah.
And we've been, I think we've budgeted 2.6 for Phase One, Phase Two.
I don't know if there's apples and oranges in Phase Two anymore, though, that things were not in Phase Two, were in Phase Three, and now they're in Fa, I don't know.
I do, I do know that the Phase One work is essentially what we quoted in the total cost at the bottom there, is essentially what we had provided. Now, you know, if, if Phase Three and Two are slightly different, then...
So if this, if this four, what did I say, was four, four, whatever, but we've got, how much grant?
Million.
I think it's nine, 980,000, just under...
Called a million, so that's three, four. Where's the other, I guess, where does the other 800 come from that we were budgeting, that we don't, didn't budget?
So, so we will certainly need to figure that out.
Yeah, we've got a couple of million from the state for stormwater issues.
I think that's used up, that's, that's been already applied to another drainage project, from what I understand.
So that overreach does become...
It's a fund balance.
Phase Two, that is, is going to be well over budget, more than we budgeted for Phase Two, so.
So can we have a to-do of having Deborah tell us? And the reason I'm asking, I think we, I think we've got to re-up our, you know, a little bit of a longer range forecast beyond Jan, or June of next year, because we've got this, I think our beach numbers are going to, we're going to find out maybe moving a little bit as well. And I don't, I think we did not budget any of the, over the 2.6 in any of our out-years. So anything above 2.6 to the 5.8, that's 3.2. We don't have any of that forecasted in our out-year projections on our fund balance impacts. Now hopefully the, the grant, now the grant, can you tell us about the grant as far as where that sits, as far as our likelihood to, I think you said it could complete, and or we will be getting an extension, or you think we will complete by February, I guess you said?
Yes, we have, we have filed for an extension, but the grant as it sits now does expire in February. It was a very short window, it was a two-year window that FEMA gave us to get that project in the ground. They, we then requested, as you will recall, that original grant was for protection at six feet. We added a foot. It took them close to a year to approve us going to the higher foot. So our grant...
Likely to tie that we'll get an extension.
So, so our grant administrator feels very confident that we will at least get that year extension. Again, we're, to be safe, we're not counting on it, but between now and the Phase Two bidding work, we will know if, if that grant gets extended, we will also have the answer on the environmental permits. So it is possible that we get that, that we slow it down a bit if we choose to, to, because we have a little bit more runway with the grant extension. Right now, that grant deadline is what's, it's the golf course work is really keeping us on pace for Phase One, it's the grant deadline and the potential loss of the million dollars that's keeping us on a very tight schedule for Phase Two. That could get extended for the Phase Two work.
So tonight, are you looking for, if we make a motion that we would go ahead with Phase One and Phase One a contingent upon an executed easement, that would, I think that contingency has to be introduced in there, that we have that execution. And I think an assurance versus an execution, I couldn't go for that.
You could not go for assurance?
We've, we've been waiting a year.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we've got to, we had to either find out what's going on, or we got to ask Wild Dunes politely, can they please give us the easement? If it's, if it's basically a copy and paste of what we've already got, I don't, I'm not following why it's taken a year. And I, I mean, for us to, for us to do all of this commitment and start down the path of the construction to find out that we possibly have another issue, I, I don't think that would be a prudent business move, but that's just me.
So I would just caution the group that, and I think we've been talking about this for months on end now, we, we have worked ourselves to where we, we really do have a 45-day window of execution between, if, if this group approves the work, we, by our schedule, we would have a contract signed by Thursday. So it would really potentially, and if we don't get it done, if we, really if we don't execute the contract to forward the work on Thursday, that window of opportunity may close on us.
So what happens if we sign the contract and then Wild Dunes says no?
So, so that is back to the question of an assurance versus actually having ink on the, on the easement. I think that I would rely on our legal advice, on what we get back from Wild Dunes in terms of the reliability of what, what they provide back to us that qualifies as an assurance. Definitely don't want to, do not want to get down the road and not have an easement at the end of the day, but at the same time, if they're telling us that they're going to grant it, we have something back from them saying, you know, it's, it's a, it's a fine print on the easement that, I don't know what, it's been so...
I'd like to hear what our attorney has to say, because if, if we have a binding contract, and then Wild Dunes tells us that we can't do it, what, what then?
This is going to hit him very cold. I don't, this is probably the first...
I mean, it depends on what sort of assurances they give us. I mean, ultimately, if they say, yeah, we're going to give you an easement, we sign the contract based on those assurances, we probably have causes of action against them, promissory estoppel, we relied on them. But obviously, having a signed easement is the most adequate assurance we can get. But we've also got time constraints, too. So without, without having seen what they say, like what their response is going to be, how wiggly, wishy-washy it is, it's really hard to say.
I mean, so you haven't seen any...
I haven't, I haven't really been involved, other than on the release stuff with Wild Dunes.
Right.
I mean, we, I mean, we talked with their lawyer, they, one of their concerns was, if we granted the easement and the city didn't do the job, how would they be protected? So he was like trying to, you know, so there's a little bit back and forth.
I'm just trying to understand how our, we're dealing with Wild Dunes and a legal issue and our millions of dollars, and our attorney hasn't been involved. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I've been involved, but I'm not a dirt lawyer and I don't draft easements. There's real estate lawyers at our firm that I think have talked, is it Jay Claypool? Is that...
Yeah, so...
It's a lawyer at Nelson Mullins that we've been negotiating with.
And, and their lawyer has been the one who is working off the original easement that was granted for the other easement, and we're waiting for that information back. And I, and we don't have that, we don't have that back from them as of today. But yes, that, once we get something back from their lawyer, our lawyers would certainly see that. But it should be very similar to the easement agreement we already have in place for the other easement.
One more question. It was in the email documentation that you sent us, you thought, we're talking about the timeframe. So we're, we've been notified also that we have to wrap up by October the 15th.
That's correct.
October the 15th is, what, basically 45 days from now, or 50 days from now. The language in the awards talk about a 55-day window for the contractors to get their work done. So realistically, we get, who knows when we're going to get the easement, we get the contract, I don't know how long, what the timeline on that is. You know, are we going to be in the first, second week in November before dirt, dirt turns? And then are we going to be heading down a deliberate known path of October 15th can't be met, and our contractors aren't on the hook because they're on a 55-day schedule? And I think their penalty for not making it is $1,000 a day. So we've got no hooks of, you know, performance. We're going to be signing the contract, they've got a longer window even on paper right now than we actually have in time. How does that all, how does that all reconcile?
It cert, yes, it's, it is, by every measure, it's a very tight window.
It's a negative term, it's a negative window.
Yeah, and we, we have been talking about substantial completion, which would satisfy Wild Dunes to be substantially completed. And they, you know, they are being reasonable in dealing with their deadline on us.
But I mean, is, is that in a contract? I mean...
The liquidated damages that they would pay, yes, that part of it.
I mean, no, no, what, so again, I'm trying to cover ourselves here and looking at this as, you know, worst, worst-case scenario, because this, this is, this is a Hail Mary pass right now. And if the Hail Mary's not caught, what happens? So we're going to sign a contract that may or may not get the easements that required for the contract. And then if the contract, the contractor goes out there, and it's very rare that construction projects get done sooner than we expect, so October 15th is right around the corner. What happens if we are in the middle of this work and October 15th rolls around? What, what happens then?
We, yeah, we cannot be in the middle of the work on October 15th. And I...
What, what if we are?
But all these...
I mean, what if there's a rainstorm and we are?
Yeah.
But is that in the contract? I mean, is that something that has been negotiated? If, if, because it's, it's a very much a possibility.
So the contract calls for them to pay liquidated damages of $1,000 a day.
No, no, that's what they pay us. What is, what is Wild Dunes going to do if we are not done by October 15th?
Yeah, they have not told us that. We don't have a contract with Wild Dunes. So they're, they are, I think, taking a leap of faith to allow us to do it, which they have indicated they're willing to do, but they've also indicated to us that time is critical, they need to have the golf course open, and, and they are, by all accounts that we're seeing, they're willing to allow us to do that. And we've talked about what, what happens...
Does it not seem that we should have a conversation of what happens on October 16th if this is not done?
We, we just have to...
Crazy? I...
Yeah, we have to have it done. I mean, just like they have to have their golf course done, it's the same, they're under the same scrutiny with their contractor. They have to have the work done.
I mean, there were, there was a presentation today that said, I think Wild Dunes has, they have an event, a golfing event on, opening event on that golf course at that time, so...
Well, I think it's the 20, 25th, 20, yeah, 27th. We have, yeah, we're, we're aware of that, and, you know, they have, they have indicated the, the work that we're doing is crossing their fairway in two locations. The rest of the work is out of play of the golf course. They have, they have certainly told us, we need you to prioritize, you know, being out of the, out of the field of play. They allowed us to cut across the middle of their fairway without closing down the golf course to get across 30th Avenue, and they have just expressed a willingness to work with the city to get it done. If by some, you know, if there, if there is, every effort is being made to be sure that the golf course is playable and they can open when they want to open, and they wouldn't be allowing us to do this if they had, if they didn't feel like that was the case.
So, what you're saying is that the entire project does not have to be completed. What has to be completed as fast as possible are the two crossings of the golf course hole. Is that correct?
By, by our contract and by what we've relayed to our contractors, it all has to be completed.
Okay. But if, and that is contingent on signing the contract Thursday and notice to proceed given this week.
That's correct.
But the, the contingency, I think, with, with Wild Dunes is that we need to be finished with the work that affects play on the golf course. If there's some work doing, going along on the side, along the, the walkway beyond the cart path, I don't, I mean, this is a thought, this is not in, in written, but I don't think there would be any problem with that kind of work being done.
The most complicated work we envision is this work right here, and we don't want to mention, or not to tell anybody, but there is a, a what-if. Fine. But the plan right now is you're finished on October 15th, and people are driving their golf carts down that on October 15th.
Can we at least have a conversation and get some idea what their, what their, you know, what if we were, if, if the contractor timeline right now is long, we know it's longer than October 15th, that's a no. That's what we've given them in, in their bid and proposal.
Shouldn't we basically just try to plan on, we're, you know, the likelihood of going
past October 15th probably is, I'm guessing, likely?
I would not say that's true. I would say they have all been made crystal clear that they have to be out by October 15th.
Okay, that, it just wasn't what the document said, but okay, I'll, if that's the case-
And there will be, there will be punch list type items that will linger a few days.
So, then we're back, then we're back primarily to the easement?
Yep. The question of whether we authorize, whether we sign a contract with an assurance rather than an execution, Scott is a-
I mean, I, I just keep going back to this. I mean, as an attorney, as our city attorney, is this something, I mean, if, if we're not out of there on the 15th, I mean, they can just say that you're trespassing and get the heck off the court, I mean, they, with, without any, we don't have anything in writing that says what's going to happen. I mean, I, I'm just off the top of my head, like what, what could happen? I mean, could they say that? Is that an option? Is, is it, would we have anything if they said, you know, could they start fining us? The, however much money they're losing on golf course fees? I mean, what, what are the problem? I mean, what, what possible issues could we have on the, I don't, just don't want the city to end up here, sitting here on October 16th and being like, oh shucks, we didn't see that coming. I mean-
We, we are, we are doing this during peak hurricane season, too.
There, I mean, every contractor is supposed to build in weather days into normal weather days, but like, yeah, you're right, if we got a contract, you know, if we got a hur, you know, hurricane three or four days-
Probably wouldn't be opening the golf course either.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, their contractors are under the same-
All bets are off on that. But that'll, that would push everybody back, but if it's something that's not weather-related, that it's, you know, typical construction delays, what happens then? Does anyone have the answer to that question?
They would have different options. I mean, you're, like you said, they could tell us, get off, you know, stop the work, they could sue us for the damages for the golf tournament or whatever, not going forward. I mean, it really depends on how Wild Dunes wants to react. They could reschedule the golf tournament and not be a big deal, like who knows what they'll, what they'll do. There's certainly-
Isn't that, isn't that something that, I mean, in a contract like this or situation that we should have a conversation at least and have something-
Yeah, well, the issue is we don't have the contract with Wild Dunes, one, and two, like even their local lawyer here has to run everything way up the flagpole. Like every time we've tried to get with him, it's not like he's calling somebody here at Wild Dunes talking, he's got a board of directors. Yeah, so it's, it's, I don't even know that their lawyer could give you a clear answer on that right now without getting guidance from their board.
Which, I mean, and that's, and that's the concern. I mean, that's, that's how we ended up where we are with these easements, too. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that happens and I just, causes me anxiety. I, I don't know.
Any thoughts on assurance, MAC Board versus document? I mean, is this something legally would assess for on our behalf to give us a risk?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it depends on, like, obviously, ideally, we would have an inked easement in place before we sign the contract, but if, if their lawyer reaches out and says, yeah, look, we're going to get an easement, it's going to be something in the similar form to this, I need to run it up the flagpole, I probably would feel comfortable with that.
And would you want that in an email or a document?
Oh, yeah, we would prob, we would definitely want something in writing from them that they're going to eventually grant us an easement.
With any of the critical items that are required in the easement, I mean, bullet point at least, but, I mean, an easement could be a lot of different things. It may not be what we need.
And I think if, if we gave them the assurance that we would expedite the crossings of the fairways in that area, make that the top priority, and have only ancillary work to the side, if there was, there is a big event 10 days after the 15th, that could still proceed.
Correct, and there's, you know, and, yeah, we've been in contact with the golf course. We, we did the work for their renovation, so, you know, we're familiar, we've been working with them. We have a, the contractor has a professional golf course subconsultant contractor on his team, because they know how to work on golf courses and get them, eliminating the impacts and get them back to where they need to be. So, you know, it, the 55 days is due. It's not a big project. It's HDP pipe, it's not concrete pipe.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it is not nearly as impactful to the playing parts of that golf course as the last project that we did that crossed their golf course and they, they worked around it for eight months.
Months.
And, and they have indicated, you know, they have only indicated a willingness to work with the city to get this project done. They, they, you know, as MAC has talked about, getting executed documents down from the ownership is challenging, but the local team has been nothing but agreeable and supportive and, and helping to work to get this project done, telling us, you know, areas to prioritize, to get done first, to have the least impact on there. But, but it is, it is not at all an adversarial situation where I would expect that, you know, they would bring suit against us if we're late. We, by every measure, we want to be a good partner and do get out of there as quickly as we can and not cause them an impact, but they have, every step of the way, expressed a willingness to work with us to get this, and, and they see the importance of this project on the neighborhood, on the residents adjacent to, to us, so they're, they've been very supportive.
Last quick question, did you get the two homeowner easements?
No. Well, there is one that we don't have, and it's actually, it's actually away from all of these proj, it's two lots away from these projects, and there is one that is a, it was not executed correctly, and that one, we don't have back yet, but they're executing that correctly and sending it back. Jimmy?
Douglas, the eight-month project you were talking about, was that completed timely?
Rick, I believe so. We, we held the contingency for, you know, we had a little bit of a-
Dust up at the end.
Dust up at the end and-
So, we got a history of completing things on time?
Yeah, that one went, you know, pretty much to plan on schedule.
Sure.
Across the course, so, yeah.
And Rick, to your point, this one, while it's been complicated to get to this point, the actual construction of is not so complicated. Yeah, and I, and I would echo some of Douglas's comments, I mean, the local team has been great, just working with us and trying to get things done. So, we need, if, if, go ahead.
You just said there's one easement that we're getting and one that is two houses away, so do we not have to get that one?
Yeah, it's not an easement, it's a, it's a release.
I'm sorry, the release.
Yes, we will need to get that release.
For Phase One?
Yes.
Like, before they can start work?
I think we will have, I think it will be just like the easements, where we will provide them assurances that it's, that it's coming and, and make our lawyers happy and their lawyers happy. But I don't know that we will have that release back in hand by signing the contract on Thursday.
Thought Wild Dunes wanted, needed those.
Say that again?
I thought Wild Dunes needed those before we passed.
Yeah, so the-
It was 100%?
Yes, so, so the one that we don't have-
Yeah, where is it?
Is actually, and I don't know if you can, this one, right there? It is the green dot, and it's actually the lot owner that's two away from that green dot. So, on that one, the worst-case scenario is that, that part of this project would be shifted to Phase Two.
And Wild Dunes will let us do that? Because the last I heard, they wouldn't let us take one out.
That's correct. Yeah, this is a standalone one down on the end.
So, they will let us exclude that one if we want it?
Yes.
Okay, so that's somewhat hardcore on that one.
That's not on the golf course, is it? Where you're talking?
The green dot is on the golf course. But we would not, potentially, the plan would be to not do that green dot until we, until we got that release. The other one is in that continuous line where the black line is down at the bottom page, those we need-
That was just a mistake, a scribbler's error or whatever, and so they're getting, we're fixing that one.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, that's correct.
But it wasn't, I mean, everybody's on board, it was just-
Same, like when we did the beach regirishman easements, too, people would sign them and just send them back and not notarize them or something like, so it's a little, it's an easy fix.
Good, Rusty down here.
Question or?
Well, yeah, I want a chance to weigh in, thank you. I mean, I've been listening to everybody else very patiently, so I'm just going to say that I'm going to come down on the side of having a leap of faith that we've got good partners with Wild Dunes and people to work with and, and, you know, I'm going to be supportive of this all along. For years, we've been talking about a waterway path that started off being just a simple repaving, and now, you know, it's turned into a tidal flood mitigation project, which is very complex, and I think we owe it to our neighborhoods, our residents, our neighbors, our visitors to do the right thing by this path, so just going to be brief with it and say that I'm in favor of us moving forward for this project when we get to the point where we're considering it.
So, Rick, while you're here, we can have more discussion once we get a motion on the table, but we need to suspend the rules of order and I'll entertain a motion to cover Item 6A1, 2, and 3, even though 3 is really our Palm Boulevard project, but you can speak to that while you're here.
Second. You got a better one?
Do we need to add 1A?
Which one?
Uh, one, we were talking about adding 1A, I don't know that that was in the-
I think we'll, when we, when we do 6A1, Scott, we'll amend and add the change orders to that. We're just moving the order of the agenda right now. So, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So, our first item, Scott, to your point, the consideration of Waterway Boulevard Flood Barrier Project, Phase One Construction, Trulock Construction, 1.269 million.
I'll make the motion. Make a motion to approve contingent upon, I will call it, attorney-approved assurance or written executed easement.
From Wild Dunes?
Uh, yeah, from Wild Dunes, and this is to also include Items 1A as well.
Is that, you, before we start work or before we sign the contract?
Before we sign the contract.
I'll second that.
Quick comment on that?
Okay, Nicole, are you?
I'm mostly good, all right.
I wanted to make a comment just to add another wrinkle to the already overly complex situation, but the, what's in your packet is to approve Trulock, and they are actually not the lowest bidder. We have determined that they are the lowest responsible bidder at this point, because when we got the bids in, we vetted who was doing the site work on the golf course. Wild Dunes had some very strong opinions about the work that was getting done on their property and on the golf course. The lowest bidder is IPW, their site work contractor was not a golf course-specific contractor. Wild Dunes has told us that it, that they would not allow us to proceed with the project without a, without a golf course-specific project. So, Trulock's, the other two bidders did include the golf course work being done by a golf, a golf course subcontractor. So, I just wanted that to be in the record.
What was the difference?
Uh, it was not, it was-
Couple of, 20,000.
20,000, very minimal difference, very-
But our procurement code.
This, that we're looking at right now is the current, the bidder that we're going with.
That's correct.
On Phase One and 1A.
Do we need to amend the motion or for approval to accept the other bidder?
That's just, no, this is, this is what's in your packet, what the motion was on. I just wanted to have that in the, in the, the record.
Other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 6A2 is consideration of tied valve purchase for flood barrier project, 59,348.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Douglas, you have a go ahead and cover three.
Yes, this is, this should be quicker. Uh, this is, but this is a, this is also a Thomason-Hutton project, but also, but completely separate, so we're now switching to our other drainage project that's in our budget this year. This is Palm Boulevard between 38th and 41st Avenue, and, and what's in your packet is a, is a proposal from Thomason-Hutton to handle three items, two of them we knew of and, and expected. That is the bidding and the construction administration, which will be necessary to get that job done. The other part of that proposal is a little bit of redesign work. We, we heard, I guess, the unfortunate news about the Water and Sewer Commission not being able to execute their project in Basin Inn. We, if you'll recall, we did a lot of work to coordinate this project with their project. That coordination did come at, at an expense to the city in terms of, we had conflict boxes incorporated into the design for their sewer lines. We also actually chose to put our lines on the opposite side of Palm Boulevard, which is not ideal from a performance perspective. The water line, or the sewer line was planned on the lowest side of Palm, so we were putting our line on not the best side. They were going to make it work, but this will make the project perform a little bit better, and I think that it, it should be a pretty significant cost savings to do this.
Construction cost savings.
Maybe a couple hundred thousand, Rick, is that fair to say? So, that redesign work is also in there. So, this is, that portion of their work would be 108,600. That's a little redesign and then construction, bidding and construction administration.
Is that what's in the budget for, of the 1.85 million for this scope of the project goes?
There's a, there's a million eight-five, but that is, that is additional work than just their engineering work. That has the construction work in there. We obviously don't have the-
We didn't have it broken out by, for what this goes.
That's correct, yeah, we did.
It's in there.
It's in, yeah. Douglas, I think you said this, the only really new item is this redesign work since the Water and Sewer guys aren't doing their work.
Yes, that's additional work for-
I mean, the bidding and contra, construction administration was-
That's additional work for bidding and contra, construction administration was part of the 1.8. Yeah, but we do release the Thomason-Hutton contract as the need arises, so we haven't authorized yet the bidding and construction administration. So that's also what we're asking for you to do tonight.
So this item is item six, A, three, consideration of redesign work, bidding and construction administration for drainage project at Palm Boulevard between Thirty-Eighth and Forty-First Avenue to Thomason-Hutton for a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred.
Motion to approve.
Second. Other questions? Douglas, other, Rick, other comments?
It's complicated enough.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Rick, thank you, as always, good, good partner. Right, we'll hop back up to item three B, major beach nourishment permitting update and current beach conditions. We have Steve Trainum and Dr. Patrick Barano from CSC here with us tonight, thank you all for hanging with us for a little over an hour.
Yes, let's talk about something simple. And I try to keep this as short as possible, understanding the time, I told Doug I could probably stay here for three or four hours and just get started on everything going on on the beach, but we won't do that. We'll give you a couple of quick updates on what the corps is doing and will continue to do. Right now, we're focused on, they're focused on the south end still, doing the beneficial use project, removing material from the dredge disposal islands on the intercoastal waterway. Right now, they've been paused for a few weeks as they shift the dredge actually into the next area, which is different than what they've been doing before. Prior work, they've been moving equipment by excavator and truck and pushing it over the side of the impoundments into the front of the dredge, and it's been a pretty slow process. Now they're actually floating the dredge into these islands so they can directly dredge the material, so they're expecting significant increases in the production rate. They have two containment areas still to dredge, roughly, I think about three hundred thousand yards still to be placed. And this material will be placed in two areas, essentially between Fifth and Sixth Avenue and then further north into the Seventh and Eighth Avenue area. We've been told that this material that they're gonna be placing is a better quality sand that has less fine-grained material and mud in it. I'm optimistic that if that's the case, we'll see actually more sand higher in the profile. What we've observed with most of the work that they've done so far, there's kind of been two issues with it. One, a lot of the work was done pretty much in the shoals of breach inlet area, and we feel like a lot of that material, one is a lot, is mud that's just quickly moving offshore in the water. And then also just being incorporated into the delta of breach inlet instead of moving up the profile and into, and building the dry sand beach. We, we do expect some dry sand beach growth from what they've placed, but with that finer material, fine-grained sand creates a shallower beach slope in, in any kind of condition. So the sand that they're placing, you'll see a wider intertidal beach, but maybe not the, the dry sand gains that we were hoping to see. So hopefully a coarser sand and a cleaner sand will perform a little bit better, and you'll see some dry sand beach improvements with what they're going to do. The other update from them is that they have placed a bid out for dredging the intercoastal waterway and the shoals actually within the waterway of breach inlet, and they're gonna place that material on your beach, and that material should be even better, from what we're being told. I believe it's about three hundred and fifty thousand yards that they're planning on placing, and that will be, again, back in kind of that Fifth, Sixth, Seventh Avenue area. They're trying to stay away from placing it, you know, kind of right in the inlet, to try to get more of it to remain on the beach and let it kind of shift down the beach over time.
Steve, did you say the shoal within breach inlet that you're, they're gonna dredge?
Within the intercoastal waterway portion of breach inlet, yes, not actually out in the ocean side. Please stop me anytime with questions. So we are, pretty much have the permit application ready to go for the major offshore project, and I'll go through some of the details of that here in a second. We've been doing a ton of work on looking at the offshore borrow areas and doing geophysical surveys, so I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Patrick Barano here in just a second. That package includes permit drawings, the permit narrative that describes the action, we need a list of adjacent property owners so that notifications can be sent out. We also have a biological assessment and essential fish habit assessment, so all the required documents that go into that permit, so we should be able to put that out by next week. With that, we anticipate that the permits should be received by mid-next year. They've, they've been doing a good job of moving things through a little quicker than ten years ago, so we don't see any major issues with that. And that would put us at the earliest construction window, being in the late summer, fall of 2026, ideally outside of sea turtle season, but that's something that we were requesting a permit that would be open-ended as far as the construction window, to allow us the most flexibility for a bid and, you know, just kind of placing sand as the need is there. So that's the earliest window that we could look at. So that, I'll turn it over to Patrick to talk about the offshore sand search.
Thanks, Stephen, good evening, y'all, my name's Dr. Patrick Barano, as Mayor Pounds mentioned, and I'm gonna talk to you about how much sand you have offshore, it's a lot. I know that some people talk about how communities are about to run out of sand for nourishment, not, not here. We've collected about twenty-three thousand acres of bathymetry data from Dewey's inlet all the way over towards the jetties, about five thousand acres of geophysical data that I'll describe in more detail in a second, and pretty close to three hundred borings, including almost a hundred collected specifically for this effort. So this figure you see here shows a large portion of that bathymetry data that we've collected across the central portion of the island. The red box depicts the area in which, with ShipA coordination that Stephen mentioned, we've conducted some additional geophysical surveys for cultural resources. And then all those dots are the different borings that you see on there, on the right-hand side, that's a, that's a picture of one of the borings. So this bathymetry data includes what are called single and multi-beam systems, I mention this because single beam just takes a single line of data, right? It's like a sounding line on a ship that they used to collect back in, you know, the eighteen hundreds whenever they were surveying for T-sheets. Multi-beam does a whole sweep, right? So if you look closely at this image, you can tell that inside that red box, there's a lot more detail than outside that red box, and that helps us a lot. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about identifying the different types of sand resources that are offshore, because there are two or three different types, and that doesn't matter as much for the permitting. Honestly, the state of South Carolina casts a pretty wide net with what they allow to be placed on beaches. However, for operations with dredgers and contractors, it's very, very important, because with these advanced survey techniques, back in the day, we'd tell them, all right, you've got a thirty-acre box within which we're pretty sure this is the quality, now we can say, we want you to swing that dredge arm two hundred feet to the east, because that sands a lot better. So it's a pretty cool advancement, and the data set that we've developed, the only one that I've seen in South Carolina that's even comparable was a USGS-sponsored survey done about twenty, thirty years ago off the Grand Strand. So it's pretty incredible that a local community like IOP sponsored something like this, it's incredibly comprehensive. Some of our geophysical data is some of the frankly coolest data to look at, side scan sonar, it's a really fancy fish finder. We take pictures of the seafloor bottom, we can stitch them together in mosaics and find shipwrecks, like you see here on the top right, that's actually two shipwrecks where one was fouled, or sorry, one, one actually sank, and the other one was fouled on its mast and sank on top of it, that's why it looked kind of like an X. And if you zoom into that on the computer, you can actually see deck boards and portholes and stuff like that, it's really incredible. The bottom left, we've got ballast mounds, that, that one on the left right here, that's actually a wake behind the ballast mound from the tidal bottom currents. So these are cultural resources that ShipA doesn't want us to touch. It's in water where if you were there standing on top of it, you wouldn't know, because you can't see your fingers, it's so cloudy, but it's a cultural resource, and so we're working with ShipA to avoid those areas. Previously, that giant red box that I showed you guys a few minutes ago back here, that whole area was off limits, because they said, we're pretty sure some of this stuff is out there somewhere. Well, now we're able to say, okay, well, here it is, why don't you put a buffer around that and then we can dig up to that limit, right? So it frees us up a lot from the previous restrictions that we've experienced off IOP, and it's, like I said, it's, it's just cool, it's very, very interesting imagery. Onto the borings and some of our characterization of the material, so we've got two hundred and sixty-five borings collectively, these were collected in advance at the two thousand and eight, as well as the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen projects, and then an additional ninety-one have been collected in the last eighteen months or so. We've got close to eight hundred samples from all of them, it's, it's a lot of sand that we've, that we've looked through. And, and fortunately, what we've been able to identify are these four borrow areas, that, again, if you look closely here, you can see these four black boxes from north to south, one, two, three, four, and those are areas in which we found beach-quality sand. And just for reference, the bottom table is the actual beach sediment that's been sampled over different events on IOP, and the top table here is the actual, what we call the composite statistics, so the, the sand characteristics, to a cut depth of ten foot, which is incredible. Typically, in South Carolina, you see cut depths of four to six feet, but there's plenty of places off Isle of Palms where you have ten feet of good material. So borrow area one, that's this large box, really, really big box, and, and this one's, this one's a little funky. It's, it's got, instead of hills of sand that move around like dunes, it's actually got creek beds that are filled in with sand, they're called rippled scour depressions. They're up and down the coast, I was talking to a guy at a conference in April from Australia, the government of New South Wales is really interested in these things, because they serve as a conduit for sand transport between different parts of shoreface. So if you look on the side scan here on the bottom, the bright spots are the sand, the dark spots are the less sand, more mud and shell and that sort of thing. And so what we've identified here in the cartoon on the left is a series of channels that are roughly ten to twelve-foot deep, don't wanna get too far from the microphone, ten to twelve-foot deep and about six to eight hundred feet wide that run kind of shore oblique, like from kind of northwest to southeast across the shoreface here. And you can see those actually in the multi-beam bathymetry, where if you kind of compare in your mind's eye between the two figures, the lighter areas are the lower areas. And again, that multi-beam is fantastic with the wide sweep instead of the single beam, because we can actually see ripples that are like that big on the seafloor around there, so we know it's sand. Borrow areas two and three are a little bit further seaward, these are classic sand waves on the outer edge of the Ebb Delta for Dewey's inlet. They move a little bit, but they, they more or less stay in place over time, balanced between the tidal bottom currents and the waves coming from offshore. These are pretty big piles of sand, too, as you can see from the graphic on the left here, we're talking about anywhere from ten to fifteen feet of clearance from what we estimate to be kind of like the seafloor that we don't really want to touch versus the wave of sand on top that we would be wanting to harvest to actually put up on the beach. And then finally, even further offshore, pretty close to the Three Nautical Mile Line, but within state waters, is another sand shoal, it's actually a named shoal called Rattlesnake Shoal. And this is another sand wave that's more or less stationary, it's been on T-sheets for a hundred and fifty, two hundred years, and it's, it's made of beach-quality sand. So in total, we've got these four areas that are a couple, several hundred, if not more than a thousand acres worth of beach-quality sand to about a ten-foot cut depth on average. So collectively, that means we've found about fifteen and a half million cubic yards of beach-quality sand right offshore Isle of Palms, which doesn't really mean a lot to you guys, but you could take, I wouldn't recommend this, but you could take every square of dry inch on the Isle of Palms and cover it with three and a half feet of beach sand with that much volume. Again, I would not recommend doing that, but it's a lot of sand to prove the point.
Excuse me, hold on a second, you're, oh, I'm, I'm listening, well, you're, you're going really fast.
Sorry, sorry, I'm trying.
Can you go back to the fifteen million, whatever it was, and just repeat that?
Yes. We found about fifteen and a half million cubic yards of beach-quality sand that we're confident the state of South Carolina would permit us to harvest and place.
Right, see, we're, we're used to dealing in like four hundred cubic yards, or, you know, or a thousand.
I told you it's a lot.
And then the second part?
Yeah, so Isle of Palms above water covers about twenty-eight hundred acres. And so if you run the numbers on that, you could cover the whole island in about three, three and a half feet of beach sand with that.
Very good, thank you.
It's plenty, and, and at about an eight-year, eight to ten-year return period on the projects with a project volume of two to three million yards, you're talking about thirty or forty years' worth of sand sitting right here within state water, so it's phenomenal, you're in a phenomenal position. And, and what's more, there are areas that we're gonna have to coordinate with ShipA over, because, like I mentioned, that red box was previously verboten, and we're trying to go back and forth with them with these updated survey methods to show them, hey, we're not gonna mess with the shipwrecks, we're gonna stay four hundred feet or two hundred feet or however many feet away from them, no problem, but please let us get to that nice beach sand that's right on the outside of that exclusion zone. And we're confident we can get them to, to that point at some point, but in the meantime, you can see this larger area up to the north that's not in that red box, that it's actually the largest of the borrow areas, there's a lot of beach sand in there for the next one, two, three, large-scale offshore dredge basin nourishment projects. And, and like I said, this is representing decades, at least thirty, if not forty or more years' worth of beach sand, based on the measured annual losses on Isle of Palms, it's a fantastic long-term resource. There's other communities that we work for that are having to go into federal waters, or having to go eight, ten, fifteen miles up coast, down coast to find good beach sand like this. Because of all the inlets around here, because we got a relatively shallow nearshore and, and shelf, we got plenty of beach sand to work with. There, I think that's it for you, I'm happy to answer questions once we're, once we're all through.
Patrick's been doing a lot of work, he was really excited about some of that data, so I wanted to have a chance to be able to.
Were you a bit excited without finding fifteen million cubic yards?
I'm gonna say no.
Yeah, and, you know, the, the long-term trend, I'll be a little bit more optimistic that we're beyond thirty or forty years, you know, with the current loss rates that we have in the project schedule. So we'll kind of get into a little bit more of that. So to look at the nourishment plan, we spent a lot of time with the Beach Management Ad Hoc Committee to develop what we call a minimum healthy beach volume, and we use this volume to calculate how much sand you need to add to your beach, just to get it to a minimally healthy condition. That's kind of the part A of designing a beach nourishment project. And so looking up and down the island, at the south end, we have a deficit that, all this data is based off of February twenty twenty-five. We are currently surveying this week for the updated annual survey, so we can update all these numbers and see how things are shifting around, but they're relatively accurate. South end deficit of about two hundred and thirty-five thousand cubic yards. Individual stations, that's about sixty cubic yards per foot of sand for the density. Again, this is also before the corps had placed any sand there, so by the time the corps is done placing sand, we expect that number to go down substantially. The background erosion, that's the part B of designing a nourishment project, is you have a design life, you calculate how much sand do you lose every year? And we established fifty-five thousand cubic yards, which is a very aggressive amount of sand losses along that south end. And that's based off the erosion that we observed from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four being abnormally high. From two thousand nine to two thousand eighteen, that end lost about ten thousand yards a year, actually a little less than that. Those two years, we lost over a hundred thousand yards per year, so it was a very conservative estimate. But if you put those numbers together, you're looking at about a six hundred and seventy-five thousand cubic yard project at the south end as of February. We'll get into the assumptions on what we actually think may happen here in a little bit. Yes.
And I apologize, I'm kind of going back a little bit, but at, at the risk of sounding greedy, is there any way for us to lay claim to this fifteen million cubic yards of sand and to keep Folly Beach or somebody else from, no.
Yeah, it is owned by the state, so they get to decide who, who has access to it. Fortunately, I don't think Dewey's Island is trying to grab any of it, and Sullivan's has more sand on their front beach than they can. You don't have a lot of competition for, for that resource.
Thank you.
Up at the north end, there are two deficit areas, one being near the Seescape Ocean Club and Golf Course area, the other being near Beechwood East. If you add those two deficit areas together, it's about a hundred and ninety-one thousand yards just to get to the healthy condition. Again, this was in February, there's a shoal attaching which is significantly gonna alter these numbers, and these are over relatively small lengths of shoreline. The, the deficit area along the Beechwood side is probably eight hundred feet long. Once you are on either side of that, the beach is relatively healthy, similar condition at Seescape Ocean Club, you know, that Northern Portico Building's starting to get at that volume. But anywhere other than that right now still has a minimally healthy beach, that doesn't mean we don't do anything, it's just we're at that minimum volume. We assume a background erosion loss of a hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards per year, and that includes the shoal sand that periodically adds some natural sand to the background losses that are occurring. So you add those numbers together and you get a total project volume of about 1.4 million cubic yards.
And Stephen, what's your guess on the shoal, I know it's a few months from completely attaching, but how much sand do you think is?
I'll get into that detail here in just a second.
Fine.
Yes. So the, the permit plan as it stands right now, this is the, kind of the overall view, where we have fill areas at the north end and the south end. Important to note, at the north end, we include the area from Fifty-third Avenue, which is historically kind of where we've always included the, the east end projects with the east end, and then up to the turn to Dewey's inlet. While we only show certain areas being filled in this plan, we are noting and caveating that the fill may extend to the boundaries in, in the middle based off of conditions at the time. So if we were building it today, the fill areas would look something like this, based off of the conditions, but we know as the shoal attaches, if the project's not completed till, you know, a year, two, or three from now, we want to have the flexibility to move sand around, so all that kind of flexibility is included in the narrative and notes in the drawings. But we're looking at about eight hundred thousand yards of sand in the fill area one on the east, seven hundred thousand yards of sand in fill area two, which is the, the western side of the Wild Dunes area. And that does anticipate some pretty substantial accretion that we'll get into in a second. Down at the south end, we're looking at a total of about eight hundred thousand yards that we would ask for in the permit. And important to note, and I know I've said this before, what's shown on the permit would be the maximum project impact, the largest scale. In all likelihood, we wouldn't build up to that full volume, or we may not fill the full area. or we may not fill the full area based off of conditions at the time. We have to permit it so that we're allowed to if conditions worsen or we have a storm event. But that doesn't guarantee, showing it in permit doesn't mean that's exactly what we're going to build when you're talking about a beach project. So this shape here also, I will say that, you know, based off of the visit today and looking at the beach, the, the widths of the, the section shown there are going to change. We'll probably shift some more sand down the very southern end to build that berm a little bit higher based off the erosion that we experienced with Aaron. So we have this permit that's kind of based off of the conditions today without the Corps placing any sand at the south end and really without much sand accumulating from the shoal over the next two years. So it really is kind of a worst-case scenario. But some assumptions that we're, we strongly feel like are going to happen at both ends are the, is the shoals coming onshore. And that shoal contains 600, 800,000 cubic yards of sand, depending on where you draw your boundaries at. That sand's going to fully merge with the shoreline at Wild Dunes in the next two years. Based off the current configuration, it looks like the majority of that sand is going to go towards the southern half or western half of Wild Dunes. So west of the property owners beach club. But we do still expect to see significant amounts of sand going to the north. This shoal is larger than the shoal that attached in late 2015 and 2016, but it's oriented fairly, in a fairly similar manner. And in that shoal, we saw about 200,000 cubic yards of natural accretion to the east within the 18 months following shoal attachment. So we expect a fairly similar volume, if not a little bit more sand, moving to the north or east over the next 12 to 18 months from spreading of the shoal sand. And then the balance of that would be on the western end. So we're expecting gains of about 600,000 yards of sand actually migrating onto the beach over the next two years. At the south end, again, we don't, we're not currently calculating any of the benefits from the core projects. But by the end of, or mid 2026, they may have placed about 800,000 yards of sand along the south end, which is pretty much the amount that we're considering in our permit. In the best-case scenario, that means we might not have to add any sand to the south end. But I think in the worst-case scenario, we can probably assume that the volume along the south end probably needs to be more on the two, three, maybe 400,000 yards, not 800,000 yards with that benefit. But that's something we'll have to see how that core sand actually works out. Mary, to get to your point, we've done a lot more analysis of how these shoals are coming onshore. And without going too crazy into details, this is where I could get, really get bogged down. We broke the shoal area into this red box and then separated that into three different sections. And what we're trying to do is calculate how much sand is moving through this area on an annualized basis. And if you kind of focus on the, the bottom left of that left table, you can see these blue areas. Blue areas mean sands coming inshore. And you can track, if, if you look at it long enough and enough detail, you can actually track sand coming from the seaward part through the middle part, through the landward part, and then it attaches to the beach. And what we're seeing is about 250 to 300,000 cubic yards of sand per year moving through and onto the beach. So that's where I anticipate about 300,000 yards of sand attaching over the next 12 months and up to maybe another 300,000 yards the, the following 12 months as the shoal fully merges and attaches. So there's a, a good story here, too much to kind of go into in detail. The box on the right just calculates the total volume of sand in those red areas compared to when there's no shoal present. And at the bottom right, you see there's 890,000 cubic yards of sand. This isn't attached to the beach, but it's coming onshore compared to where we were in 2017, where there really wasn't much of a shoal there. So that quantifies, you know, how much sand is actually in these shoals and how quick we expect it to attach. So that's kind of the project update. Now I want to talk about Aaron and what the conditions look like today and maybe what some recommendations are. We were impacted by the storm with large swells and persistent high water that still continues. We're still close to a foot above the predicted tide today. Overall, when we're looking at the seven miles of beach, the island held up pretty well. But our hotspots where we have our erosion issues, they got hit pretty hard. So looking kind of at the south end and Breach Inlet, this is a photo from last week, Tuesday before the storm hit. We came down, flew the drone and did a little assessment. And what is shown there by the red arrow is what we call a marginal flood channel. And that channel has really been encroaching onto the southern tip of the island the past several months. There's actually two channels with a little sandbar between them. And what you see, and it's, it's difficult at this scale, but it's truncated the inner tidal beach width. And what happens with that, and I think I showed it on the next photo here, this is a high tide photo from this morning, right at high tide. The location of that arrow is right where that channel's encroaching on the beach. And that deflates the inner tidal beach width. And that means that waves are able to come much closer to the shore and you get hit by bigger waves during the high tide. If you look further up the beach by like Second Avenue and a little bit around the corner, you can see where the breaking waves are well away from the houses. There's a kind of a wide swash zone, a wide inner tidal beach. But right here at this arrow, the waves are almost breaking at the high tide line. And that's because that deeper channel is allowing these waves to come in. And that's why we have a very focused erosion event right around these seven houses is because this channel that is back here is allowing those waves to get up to the beach.
Stephen, is, is the, is the work that we're doing with the Army Corps, replacing this current, the current work that they've done, contributed to this phenomenon we're seeing where that sand is, you know, it's, it was smaller in particle size and some muddier stuff? Has that migrated to, to, and contributed to forming this channel that we're seeing?
Yeah, we spent a lot of time the past couple of weeks looking at our historic surveys of Breach Inlet aerial photography. The story with that inlet is it is just a highly dynamic inlet. You can look at the satellite time lapse of how sand just runs from Isle of Palms through that delta and merges over to Sullivan's Island. For sure, sand that the Corps has placed has moved into these shoals around the delta. But I can't tell you with any certainty, I don't think anybody could, is, is it any much different than any of the natural processes? You can go back and look at the conditions around 2019. There was a similar channel that was kind of encroaching onto the beach and we had very narrow beach widths then. We were also having, you know, not far after Matthew, Irma, Dorian, Florence, all the, the storms too. Two years later, there's over 100 feet of dry sand beach there just from natural accretion as these, these things move around.
Yes, Steve, maybe it's my imagination and I'm down there almost every day. But since the Corps has started pumping, those shoals have been, they've been growing. I mean, you could get seven boats out there on the party bar, but you can get 30 or 40 out there now. And it just seems like I hear about the natural ebb and flow of the, of the inlet, but I don't buy it. I mean, I think that the Corps, a lot of that Corps sand, you can see it pumping in and you can just see it migrating. You know, you go over Sullivan's Island on 28th and a half and look back, you can just see it growing every week. So I, I mean, maybe there, yeah, it's dynamic, but I do believe that that Army Corps sand is, is making its way down Sullivan's very quickly.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult to quantify because it's very difficult to survey. When you're trying to survey, you have to survey it at a dead high tide with calm conditions to even be able to get your boat over it to survey. You can do kind of drone-based surveys at low tide to try to quantify some of that. We don't have that high of resolution data to be able to really quantify that.
And one more thing to add, and, you know, other people can chime in, but I think that, you know, what's happening too is that sand is also making its way under the bridge and back into the, the backwaterway. You know, I think I mentioned at a prior meeting, I've got some friends that have been fishing here for 30-plus years. And for the first time ever, they can't get from Hamlin Creek to the intercoastal. So it, it's clogging back there, the inner, it's just building up. And I, it's never happened before. And the only thing that's changed is we've been pumping hundreds of thousands of cubic yards in that inlet area.
Yeah. And again, it goes, it's the same thing with having the data to, to kind of quantify it and show it year after year. We are actually kind of voluntarily doing some surveys of that this week to try to get a couple of profile lines established so that there's at least a baseline from today to, to measure what the elevations of those shoals are. It is something that we hear kind of up and down the coast on the landward side of these inlets is natural shoaling. I, I'm not saying the Corps sand is not contributing to anything. It's just until you have data to be able to show it, it's difficult. Even with data, it's, it's a very difficult thing to prove cause and effect around these inlets with any of these large-scale processes going on.
I mean, you, you wrote to us last year, I think it was March of last year, you put, and I mean, you documented that you believe that the inlet was the significant cause of the erosion down at the south, southern end. And I guess, you know, I don't know if you're going to, I don't think you're going to address it in this particular presentation, but I think we need to have some talk or discussion around, what are we doing in the inlet? We're not studying it, we're not quantifying it, we're not finding, we're going to put more sand, more sandbags, whatever, on, on people's property and on the public beach. But we're not addressing what I think you, and now we've had a second opinion, basically acknowledge that that is the root cause. And if we keep pouring money onto the beach without addressing the root cause or even starting the process of it, then I don't know what we're doing.
Well, I think one of the issues with that is, and we've been going, going back and doing a, a fresh look at some of the data, you know, there's a lot of focus on it. So we're trying to see are there, other bits of information that we can pull out that kind of extend beyond the normal level of monitoring effort that we've historically done? You know, we, we have this, we have the data and a lot of surveys that show the general character of the inlet, where the channel is and where some of these channels may be, the, the kind of the secondary channels that I'm highlighting here. But we haven't gone into, you know, the detailed kind of research that, you know, a study focused on that inlet would do. Now that, that data exists. We, we certainly can. But I, I will say that the process is very well-understood on how these inlets move, where the sand kind of goes. But even with the best data and study, I don't know that that information, it gives you much of a tool to manage it with. Because your options are, you can build a structure, like a terminal groin at the end to manage the inlet, which we've done successfully in some areas, dredging a new channel. But each of those creates a lot of other potential issues. And even with the best models, these inlets are so dynamic that these models aren't going to be able to predict, like to the scale of like these marginal flood channels, that you may have a ton of sand out in your beach system or even in the inlet. But these channels are kind of independent of that. They're just going to move kind of at their own whim. So you can study it, but I don't want to say that at the end of that study, you have a, a predictable tool to be able to manage that inlet.
I mean, I, I take it a step further. I would, I would like to see us commission an RFP to get a study to actually determine what the, what we can do at Breach Inlet to mitigate the erosion that you and now another firm have said that that's the primary cause of the erosion and find out, you know, what can we do? Is it dredge? Is it a groin? And come up with that recommendation so that we can stop the, you know, I'm, I'm not up for putting millions of dollars on the beach just to have it go over into the inlet and onto Sullivan's Island. It's a waste of money. So I, I think if we don't address the root cause, we're just going to be pouring good money after bad. That's, go ahead.
To that point, I mean, from another, one of the other studies that we had come and talked to us, it sounds like, I mean, the Wild Dunes, we know, is in a constantly ebbing and flowing. Beach gets bigger, it gets smaller, and that's been the case, I think, historically forever. The Breach Inlet side, it seems like has been in a historically accretional until, what, 2009?
I would say it was historically accretional, I mean, to the point where they built a new row of houses on what used to be the ocean. And then we, our first monitoring event was in 2009. From 2009 to about 2018, the average losses were, you know, 10,000 yards a year. You may see 30,000 yards one year of accretion and 40,000 a year, the, the next year of erosion. It fluctuated.
So doesn't it seem like that we have to figure out again before we start doing anything, why that has happened? I mean, if, if we were, if we were accretional for history, you know, back, I don't know, 200 years or whatever, and then all of a sudden in 2009, what, what happened in 2009? Is it bad luck? Did some, did we, is it, is it possibly work that we've done on the north end? I mean, is it Sullivan's? Is it? And, and can we find out?
Yeah. And I, I don't want to make it sound like we wouldn't want to do a study. We would love to do that. And we've gone back and looked at, so there's a ton of different things that you could point to being potential causes. So we looked at, there's a situation in 2021 where there was a significant evulsion event of the inlet shoals. So I actually have a picture down here at the end of the shot slide. This is a 2021 image. You'll notice how wide the, the dry sand beach is there on the south end. But the main channel shifted very far south and is coming out. You can see the terminal lobe where those breakers are on the very left side of the screen here. So the old channel's coming through here, it got cut off and the new channel reached through this area. This is 2021. This appears to be further towards Isle of Palms than prior events that we were able to see in a, in the record. And so it, cutting back that close to Isle of Palms may have reset some of the inlet dynamics. And this area, essentially creating kind of a sinkhole that has to be filled in with sand. And so, you know, that's one thing we can look at and say, well, maybe it was that event, those similar type of events have happened. We just don't have enough of a record to say with 100%.
And that just happened randomly? Or it happened from a storm?
That's just part of the natural system of the inlet. These, it's just like at the east end where shoals break off of Dewey's inlet and migrate onshore of Isle of Palms. The same thing happens at Sullivan's Island. They're getting the benefit of all the accretion. You're dealing with this shoal on the, the north side of it. You have higher sea level rise the past 15 years than we've ever documented before. We saw six inches of sea level rise over the past 15 years. Is that a blip in the sea level trend or is that a new, you know, long-term trend? You know, the, there hadn't really been any dredging, but we had hurricanes, you know, Matthew, Irma and all those in 2015 to 2020. And we had that storm season. So there, there's all these different factors. I don't know that anybody could say this is the single cause of the factor. But even that event, you're still dealing with these channels that are kind of uncontrollable unless you build a structure. And again, a structure, I can tell you with pretty much 100% certainty, you build a terminal groin somewhere on that southern end and you can protect that southern end of the island. But you also add some potential uncertainty on the downdrift side because you can't put it directly in the inlet. It has to be a little bit up the beach. And it opens the city up to some, you know, some new precedent with structures on the beach and some potential liability if somebody at Sullivan says, hey, my beach is eroding now because of that structure. That's really all they have to say. And then you're trying to prove cause and effect in a very difficult situation. I'm not saying it's not, you know, a path that we want to go down at some point. But I, personally, I would like to see with all the work that the Corps is doing, should that sand, you know, be a benefit? Let's, let, let's see how that works for a little while. You know, to date, we really haven't done any actual nourishment of that southern end. So if that restores the sand deficit that we have with the historic trends, you know, we've been relatively stable north of Second Avenue. We were actually stable on the southern tip for a long time until the past couple of months. But north of Second Avenue where we had had erosion, 23 through 24 has been, you know, the dune there didn't really even get touched by Aaron. So it's all these different things and it's a very complex system. And I, I don't want to hide behind that it's complex, we'll never understand it because there's information you can glean. But, you know, just having a study to say what the current velocities may be or, you know, the position of the channel is not really going to be the, I don't think it's going to give you much of a predictable tool because dredging that channel, it, it's a natural process that kind of happens anyway. And we can see that 2021 would essentially mimic that. We had some very severe erosion right after that.
I'm not asking for a study. I, I. I'm going back to, you put it in your own document that it's the cause of the erosion. And the second opinion said that it's the cause of the erosion, yet we're not even addressing the cause. I mean, we, all I'm hearing is we don't know, we can monitor, we can study. But how do we get to, if we know that that's the root cause, what would you recommend? I mean, I think we've got to get some help to find out what we can do about it.
Yeah. And so there's some options and I can discuss that a little bit. So like, where these arrows are with that marginal flood channel, you know, if that's your cause of erosion, your, your only tool there would be to overwhelm that channel with enough sand via nourishment to shift it further offshore. If we do a dune project, and this goes into some of the recommendations from the, from the storm, is if we were just to truck sand to the dune right now, you're still having the same erosion pressure that you had last week, and that dune's probably not gonna last long. If you're able to add 100,000 yards of sand, push that channel further seaward, then you may be able to sustain that beach for a while. This kind of goes into some of the other data we were looking at. These are cross-sections of the, uh, the inlet channel. I know, you know, the idea of, is the channel pinching off, filling up with sand. The station on top is the one that is here, and the next one is here, so you can see the orientation. These are coming from Sullivan's over to Ala Palms. And really, it's been very, you know, pretty stable as far as the in-size channel goes. We're not seeing it filling in very much. There's been a little bit of change in 23, 24, but you have to kind of look at all this in a three-dimensional world with, um, the extension of, if Ala Palms grows wider, that sand may become part of that profile. But overall, not a huge amount of change within that channel, especially as you get a little bit further out in it. Uh, so again, it's stuff that we're kind of looking at to try to see, is there any story here that we actually can use for improving our management approach? So to, to kind of get to where we're at with, um, what the beach looks like today and some potential recommendations that we would have, right now at the south end, there's about eight properties or about 700 feet that have been impacted by dune escarpment and erosion that probably qualify for the 20-foot emergency criteria that the state has. Your options to do anything about it would be to scrape the beach, the traditional emergency scraping where you're taking a bulldozer and just pushing the sand up. I don't think that's recommended in this area because the inner tidal beach is already so thin there that you're likely to just push sand in that's gonna come right back to where it was. We have been given permission to reutilize our permit that allows us to redistribute some of the core sand that they're placing. And that work, I think, would be more beneficial because you're adding sand into that area. And for a 15,000-yard project, which would be a fairly substantial fill in that area, you're looking at about $130,000 to do that. Again, you're still dealing with the erosion pressure from that channel in its current configuration. So there's not optimistic that that material would last very long, especially if we had another storm event like we just had. Sandbags, fortunately, unfortunately, may be the most, um, the option with the most certainty for protection of the structures in its current configuration. Looking at a four-row revetment, that's about 500 bags over that area at a cost of about One option in the state's been much more flexible recently is sandbags could be installed in the most affected properties, give the beach a little time to see if this channel migrates seaward again, or if the core project, you know, that sand starts to materialize. And then we could potentially either bury those bags on a quasi-temporary basis or place them at a later date around those. So I, again, I think the sandbags are the, offer the best certainty in this current configuration, but I'd love to see, you know, dune sand over them as, as quickly as we could. I just don't know that today's the, you're gonna get your money out of that.
I have a quick question about May. We've been talking, there's been turning out a couple times about 2008 to the present and stuff. Well, um, 60 years ago, Charleston Boulevard was oceanfront. And going back to the Revolutionary War, um, that beach inlet and that south end of the island has been extremely dynamic. Is that not true?
Correct. It's been highly accretional for the most part. Breach inlet before the, or historically is a migratory inlet. It wants to move over several, several thousand-foot area. Once it got developed in Sullivan's Island, installed the breakwaters, that kind of fixed the southern point of the, the inlet. Uh, and once that gets fixed, it doesn't really have the ability to migrate to the north, because that's usually kind of a spit breaching process. So that's kind of fixed the inlet, narrowed it, deepened it from where it naturally would want to be.
When was that? Sorry.
The revetments built at Sullivan's? I'm not sure of the exact date. I know it was before the 80s.
So we're, so not-
Not recently.
Not recent?
Yes. Those are all grandfathered in, uh, structures were grandfathered from the 88 Beachfront Management Act.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, so it had been a highly accretional, um, you know, to the point where they were able to build a whole new row of houses seaward of Charleston Boulevard, and then that trend has stopped, for sure.
It's, it's, it's a cycle. Nature's cycle. It's gonna create and then it's gonna, it's gonna disappear just over the years.
Yeah, it's, you know, going from that long-term accretion trend to the erosion that we're seeing now is a little different than kind of the year-to-year variation that we see. Again, we would see changes in that south end, 30, 40,000 yards per year, one way or the other. I mean, it really looked like this, and then 2022, it fell off a cliff.
We've, we've been focusing on the south end, and I see two options that you've given us to consider, the sandbags or dune work. Okay, I'd like to go back to Wild Dunes, to the areas that have experienced a lot of erosion this past week.
Yes.
What do we, what are you recommending for that area right now?
Yes, so, um, at the north end, there's, again, two erosional areas, one at Seascape, Ocean Club and the, and the golf course. Similar thing there where there's really, this is today in a high tide photo. So very little beach, not enough beach to do any kind of scraping, but we do have the option to re, continue our shoal management project that we paused in May, is the way that the state has allowed us to do that. So we can, we have the option of taking shoal sand and moving back to that area, or we can add additional sandbags. There are currently sandbags around Ocean Club and Seascape. The ones at Seascape are mainly buried in the sand right now. I think if they have more erosion, they may become exposed, or they may have settled down a little lower. So those would probably need to be dug and replaced. So those are the, the two options. Um, I've kind of quantified what a, a sandbag revetment may look like and cost there for, it's about 500 feet of impacted area that doesn't include the 18th hole, or the old 18th hole, um, for 250 to 300,000 worth of sandbags there. Moving sand, we moved about 40,000 yards with the last shoal project. It held up okay until about the past month. It was, it kind of lost a little bit right at first, and then it stabilized for a, a pretty good period of time, and then we've had, you know, this past week. So a similar size effort up there would cost about another 350K. So it's a pretty similar cost between those two alternatives. I would say, again, sandbags probably provide the most certainty right now. Uh, I do anticipate that area to start to naturally accrete pretty significantly, but probably still six to 12 months from now before we see that trend reverse based off of what happened in 2015. But I am very concerned about the, the construction work going on at Ocean Club and the city being involved in anything related to that. They had scaffolding that was placed directly on sandbags. In my opinion, I really don't want anything that the city's doing to impact what they're building, and they may need to consider how they want to handle, you know, protection of their property. That's kind of a political or legal decision, not a engineering one. They, they certainly need some protection, but how that gets implemented, I'm not sure.
Well, I, I was out there and here, the scaffolding is all compromised at this point that was there, but, um, more concerning, or at least raises radar for me, is the water is well underneath the foundation there. And I know that's a pretty substantial foundation, but I don't know if there's any damage that's been done to that, but somebody, either us ought to require a structural engineer to look at it, or they ought to look at it, because there's a lot of issues, cases in Florida and other places where these, you know, these buildings have come tumbling down. I don't think we want that. I, I, I think we need to be, err on the side of caution here and have some structural analysis of the building to make sure it wasn't compromised with that, with the water coming through there. And I don't know if that's on us or them, but I think we, we ought to look at it.
And I kind of agree with you completely that it's, at some point, you know, they're, they kind of need to tell us how they want to handle, you know, their integrity of their building with this, with the construction project and just with the foundation, because that's not information that I have or am qualified to analyze.
I guess, just a question for Mac. With us doing any work around there, are we, are we, is the city exposed in any way?
I think we need to just be, be careful around it, obviously. I mean, we're dealing with the dockside stuff in downtown Charleston, similar situation, so, um, if we don't touch it, we don't get blamed for it, so.
Well, we've already done that.
Well, that was before the scaffolding was built, for sure. Uh, and once that was there, we were limited in what we can do. So that, that, I, I don't have a great option for that. Again, we can move sand down there with our shoal projects, starting, um, the, ideally that work starts outside of turtle season. I think we can get permission to do that in either late September or starting in October. So moving sand down in that area is, is probably a lot lower risk.
So rather than sandbags, look to do, to move the sand in?
Moving the, I think the city can place sand and allow kind of waves to move that sand where nature's gonna move it anyway. But in its current condition, there's, I, I can't tell you how long sand, you know, if we place 10,000 yards, is that gonna last, you know, a month or two? We're still going in the king tide season.
Yeah.
So there's not a, a huge guarantee with that.
Katie's question. So Ocean Club, the one with the blue tarp on it right now, so they're stripping stucco, replacing windows, replacing doors, it's probably a 20, 25 million dollar project, give or take. So they're starting on this building closest to us and going around top to left.
So they've already started?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Past the point of no return? Like, taking out windows and stuff?
Yep.
Yeah, stucco's gone.
So to me, with the, I hate to say this, but with the amount of money they're spending on that, you know, adding some sandbag protection kind of on their own is a small percentage of that to, and allow them to kind of handle that. Just certainly a lower risk for the city.
Particularly given the scaffolding issue, I don't think the city ought to be touching it personally.
What about-
I'll jump ahead.
What about Beachwood East?
Beachwood's a, a little simpler. The, the good news at Beachwood, I'll, I'll flip back to here. The left side is before we did the shoal project, the right side is this morning, or actually, that was, yeah, that was today. No, that was yesterday, uh, last week, sorry. There is still a fair amount of sand that is in the inner tidal beach there. We've lost all of the dry sand beach for sure, but there's still a, a fair portion. I won't call it a significant, but a fair portion of that sand. And we're, what we're seeing is the erosional arc that has been focusing erosion around the revetment and Mr. Bernstein's house and Mr. Slotshiver's house. That is narrowing, it's becoming less dramatic, so it's improving. We're, we're going to see the shoal attach a little east of there in the next few months, so we, we are going to get some natural accretion there in the next several months, as soon as that shoal starts attaching. But certainly, there's some properties where the sandbag revetment needs to be maintained and improved. So looking at that, right now, it's really only three or four properties that are, you know, really affected. You could probably touch up a couple of the other ones, but somewhere around 250 bags would cost somewhere around 125K for that, to supplement what's currently there. You, again, we do have the ability to move some sand by truck from the shoal, um, but it's coming on naturally fairly soon, so if we placed it today, again, small quantities, you'd have to place enough to make it last until this attachment happens, and then you're looking at, you know, 3, 400,000 dollars worth of sand moving to get to that point.
Well, there's, there was water under the houses last Tuesday.
Correct. So adding the sandbags up to an elevation of about plus eight or so has kind of been the, um, goal from prior projects. They, certainly in front of the, uh, the Slotshiver's house, that one, those have settled down, so they're too low, so we'd be looking to build that back up to that elevation.
So Stephen, to your point, as the shoal is moving and attaching, so we're down to three or four properties that are in this focused area right now. We were seven or eight properties, I guess, not that long ago. That's really a question more than a statement.
Yes, today, it's, it's really, once you get past the, the pool that's kind of exposed there, those properties, the waterline, um, the bags are still in pretty good shape. They really weren't getting touched by the, the high tides that we've had the past few days. I mean, certainly, it's not the ideal scenario, but they have protection for those structures north of there. It's the ones south of that pool, between the rocks and the pool, that are really the focus. I believe that's all I have for the recommendations. I think if you add up just all the, the sandbag recommendations there, it's about 700,000. That includes the Ocean Club and Seascape area. You know, the, again, I, I love the idea of moving some sand around from the shoal. I just don't know that you have the longevity unless you do a very significant project. And then you're manipulating the shoal that's pretty much attached now and kind of nature's doing a lot of it for you. So I hesitate to go overboard on that type work.
Steve, can you go back to the Seascape and, you know, that one? That was how much for the bags? You're recommending maybe we don't do some of that?
That was 500 to 750 total bags to get around the middle part of Seascape to the other side of Ocean Club. Some of that depends on the condition of what's still existing in front of Ocean Club with those bags, because there's a fair number in front of there.
Stephen, do you have an estimate? If we were to remove that, um, section that's right adjacent to the construction to avoid interference with the scaffolding, how many that would leave?
Here, probably around half that volume, or that amount.
Two fifty, yeah.
So it'd really just be in front of Seascape, Stephen?
Seascape and-
The white, white top building.
Yeah, there's actually a little bit more room than it looks like from this image between Seascape and Ocean Club. There's a pretty big area there to span that gap.
You're saying half the, half the bags?
Correct.
Now, if we do that, can they, can they put their own bags out?
Yes, any of these owners at any point can, uh, apply to CRM to put additional bags out.
And it's the same ones we're doing, like, it's not like the smaller bags or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay.
There was suggestion about bigger bags, or is that any benefit?
Um, bigger bags, I mean, they'll move around less. These have held up fairly well, especially compared to the white cubes. So, um, other than the settling, which still can happen with a big bag, that's really where we're seeing most of the issue, is the bag's just kind of sinking down. But right now, the, I don't know that the state has the ability to permit a bigger bag. They're, they're still within that one cubic yard regulation.
What's your, what is your prediction of what would happen if we have another event similar to the eight-foot-plus, you know, tides that we saw with this errand on these three areas?
Um, I, I can't comment on the structure of the Ocean Club building. I mean, back in '07, they had much worse condition than they have now, and they had a ton of sandbags all around that structure. Same thing with Seascape. You know, the beach profile was probably five feet lower than it is now there. So I think, you know, if I'm those property owners in that regime, I'm spending the money to protect that building, you know, whether that's coming from the city or them. Down at the, the Beachwood area, those houses are on pilings, you'll get wash over under it. Again, I don't know the, the piling situation and, you know, what they're likely to face with just a, even a Hurricane Matthew-type storm. In all likelihood, they survive it, but it certainly wouldn't be pretty. Just a, a big eight-foot tide on the kind of nor'easter-type event, you know, those nor'easters are bad because they last for several days, and just one big tide, you know, isn't necessarily too bad all along the song.
And what about the other end?
The south end, um, north of Second Avenue looks pretty good as far as the dune. Again, it didn't really get touched with what we had with Aaron. He had a little bit of rack washed up on the toe of it, but very little scarping. The properties that are closest, you know, we've seen 30 or 40 feet of dune recession with a storm like Matthew. Once you lose that initial dune, then you have water, you know, hitting porches and pilings, so you would have, you know, damage to the understorey of those structures. And that's likely to, I mean, even if we put a relatively small dune there, you're not too much different than where you're at today, because that sacrificial dune in that current condition with the channel would likely be gone fairly quickly. Now, sandbags built, you know, substantially can offer some better protection during that storm with a relatively small dune, or compared to a relatively small dune. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Stephen?
Let's, we'll finish up one item on our agenda and then get to the emergency conversation. So item four is approval of previous meeting minutes. You've got the city council meeting on July 22nd, 2025. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you.
Changes to that particular meeting minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
At least, thank you. Now, old business, next item under new business is for consideration of funding for emergency beach repairs. We just heard the report from CSC.
of funding for emergency beach repairs. We just heard the report from CSC. Douglas, anything you want to add here?
No, just that we've, we've been in contact with our prior emergency work contractors. They're, they're available to go to work if this, if council authorizes the funding.
Motion to approve.
Is there an amount on this?
There's nothing.
Yeah, what do we, what do we approve?
Second?
Well, we need to.
There's nothing to approve.
We need to put them.
Just consideration, that means a motion.
Need to put an amount up to or approval of or sandbag.
Can we just kind of do math here? So was that 200?
We either need to do sandbags or scraping or something needs to be in that motion.
I would say let's make a motion to approve sandbag deployment and let's just run through the, is 200 enough on this slide, Steve? 200,000?
No.
For the first one. That one was 225. Okay. We got 225. Is 200, does that cover your half? Because that's more than half of the high side.
Now, these numbers were based off of the last pricing, Doug. Were you able to confirm whether?
Yeah, it, it's a little bit lower than that. So these numbers will be conservative. The actual cost's a little bit less.
So 200 plus 225 plus what else you got there? And 125. So that would be up to $550,000. Is that?
Okay. Can you go through that for each part of the island? 200 for?
It was 200, which was half of the, a little more than half of the high side up at Seascape Ocean Club area. Then 220, and then I took the others right off the slide. 225 for the south and 125 for Beachwood. So that added up to 550,000. Motion to approve up to 550,000 for sea bag deployment in those three areas.
Second. Second, second, second.
Yes.
That was my short.
So we can have discussion.
Yeah.
Stephen, I've got a question about another potential option to get more sand in there, at least on the south end because they're already there. But the Army Corps, can they redeploy their pipe to get more sand in the area that we need sand right now as opposed to, you know, and then continue their work further down later after we fill in with Army Corps sand in this seven, eight home stretch of, that needs more sand?
They are, I think, bound by their environmental review to only place sand north of Second Avenue. That was in what they set up in their permitting process. So I don't think they can go any further south than Second. And under their current contract, trying to get anything changed has been difficult.
Can they put it at Second? At least we can grab it back?
Well, that's where they started with their initial work.
Yeah.
And we didn't really see very much moving up high into the profile. Now, again, the city has the permit to come on top of their, what they're working and move that material south of Second.
That's what I'm saying. Move it to take, you know, have them put it at Second where they're permitted to do it and then us move it back, you know, to the houses that need it.
Yeah, I think just keeping it where it's at is just as economical and a little bit more controlled.
To move the sand from there?
Yeah, working a little bit further away from the inlet where they're placing it gives it the better opportunity to stay within the accessible part of the beach as opposed to if they place it at Second, as low as they've been placing it, it may work its way out into these attached bars before we can really even access it. And they're placing the material there because it's had so much mud in it that it needs to be out in the water to kind of wash itself out. We, we've talked to them about maybe placing it higher on the beach, but there's already areas down there that have mud outcroppings from. So we, you know, as much as I'd love to see them build a beach with it, it would not look good based off the material they've had recently.
Stephen, isn't that one, one of your options on the south end had?
Right.
That, that was a dollar amount you had in there if you could go to that side.
Yeah, I think I looked at maybe up to 15,000 yards, which, you know, 130,000 really isn't, that's not a bad deal. It's just the way that channel is right now, you may not get much life out of it. It's something we could try. I just, you know, I'd like to see the beach condition change a little bit to have, you know, try to guarantee a little bit better life out of it.
And I guess a second question I have for, is there, do we know any state funding that can help with this emergency situation?
I do not. I mean, we can certainly contact the PRC that's been, they, they are the ones that funded our last round of emergency work. We know we depleted that amount.
But there's a million and a half dollars in the state budget for beach.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if that funding is allocated to a certain project yet, but we could certainly inquire about that.
I think, I think we should.
I mean, I did speak to Senator Campson yesterday. I think he's more than willing to help us out if we need some funding from some of these projects.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. CSC, thank you. As always, yep. Next item is five, consideration of real estate purchase. Amic, Amic Equipment, 306,138. You can see our budget there and where it's coming from.
Motion approved.
Second.
Douglas, anything to add here?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is consideration of authorizing the interpretive sign project at the Marina Dock and authorizing up to 11,000 of funding. This is an unbudgeted item. Let's get a motion in a second and then we can talk about.
Second.
Douglas, conversation on this interpretive sign. I know y'all were having some talk about where to take this from since it's an unbudgeted item.
Yes. This is something that's come through the Environmental Advisory Committee, been through the Public Facilities Committee. The, the, the hope is that of this 11,000, that five, six, seven of it could come from another event. So it would leave less of a gap. But Deborah has, has identified the same pot of money that the green space, we have in our budget, money from the green space project, that we could, if the group wants to fund this, we could take it from that source of funding. If, if there's another source, we certainly look at that as well.
Nicole, do you need an amended motion to talk about where to take it from? There. Jan, are you okay with amending that to take it out of the green space funding? And second?
Second.
How would that be, how would that be handled? Because I think the Islander has committed to all the proceeds. They're going to have a donation event for an oyster roast and all of that is going to go towards that. So do they just give us the money and then offsets the, I think they're expecting, what Susan, four or five to 6,000 maybe?
Yeah, we would. And that's after our installation, right?
Yeah.
That's your question.
And Marina was donating some too.
Yeah.
And ECO Tours.
That's correct. And ECO Tours.
Yeah, there, there's still some details that would need to be worked out about the event, how the money, the, the preference would be that it goes through a 509, 3C. We think that there's one been identified that could take the proceeds and just deliver
Yeah.
Donation to the city for the amount of that.
But all of those are not included in the 11. So the 11 is the absolute max and we're assuming it's going to be maybe half that.
Something less than that.
The 11 includes the donations from the store and ECO Tours. It does not include, it's not counting on proceeds from the event because we just don't have a firm commitment or a dollar amount. So whatever the event raises would, would reduce the 11.
Got you.
Okay, up to.
Yeah. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is just a report of a purchase of gas pump pumps for the public works site from Central Anderson, 16,891. You can see where that came out of from our budget. Douglas, anything to add there?
No.
Next item is consideration of authorizing lease modifications to adopt a new Marina parking lot layout, and that is in your packet, the latest version, which is Q.
Motion approved.
Second, Douglas?
Yeah, I would just say this is, this is a project that's been with the Public Facilities Committee for a long time. The, the Islander restaurant owners have, have agreed in concept to a plan. The next steps in that process would be formally amending the lease exhibits that, that talk about the space that's under leased. There's also provisions in there that speak about shared parking. Those sections would go away. There is a leaseback provision on their employee parking lot. So we would need to hire, we would reengage Brian Kits who worked through that lease, come up with the amendments that would, that would make this change effective. That would be really the first step to be, to ensure that we can kind of get this project off of stall and underway. If that were to be successful, there would be some additional design work and obviously some construction work that would need to happen to make this happen. But the lease modifications are the first step in that process, we believe.
So what, so what we'd be voting on tonight would just be to go to that first step of sending it to Kits and getting?
That's correct.
The leases?
That's correct.
Cleaned up and agreed to that.
Because you need that agreed to before we.
And then we, and then it would come back to be fully agreed to.
That's correct.
When the restaurant, we would have to sign off on it.
That's correct.
Yeah. I would like to say that this parking lot layout satisfies me completely.
Cool.
And Douglas, you said you've met with the restaurant owners.
Yes.
Had onsite conversation.
And they're, they're agreeable.
It's like the Waterway Boulevard bath.
Don't say anything.
In, in years. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And thank you to everyone that hung with that and got it across the finish line. This is consideration of card up budget. I guess this is fiscal '26 card up budget. Is that right? Thank you for hanging in with us. We accommodated everybody else but you tonight. Sorry. It's always a pleasure to attend these. Mr. Mayor, Council, again, I put forth the budget that's in your packet for consideration for approval.
I think we're the last municipality, aren't we, that you've gone to?
Yeah.
Yeah, a motion to accept a budget.
Second.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I would like to share appreciation for, this is last week for the Beach, Beach Shuttle.
Just right.
I shared with the mayor earlier, we are 11% over our 24 number for ridership already. So that's with having four weekends where we had rain both days. So again, just wanted to share that appreciation and share that update with you. So we continue to grow that service.
Yeah, it's hard to believe it's already cycle time again. Yeah, I guess Monday's the last one.
It was a big hit. So again, just very excited and see where we continue to upward trend of that service. So just wanted to say thank you and give you that update on that.
Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thanks for hanging in with us. Next item, boards and commissions report, boards of zoning appeals minister attached, planning commission minister attached, accommodation tax advisory committee, no meeting in August, environmental advisory committee, minister attached. Next item, ordinances, resolutions and petitions, second reading, ordinance 2025 on our offenses against public peace to include regulations on hate intimidation.
Motion to.
Motion to approve. Got a motion from Katie?
Yeah.
A second. Second. I know we've had some questions around from residents and other conversations. Do you mind just addressing some of those in open?
Yeah, so one of the concerns we received was the, in the whereas clauses of the ordinance, the comments, I'll pull this up. I'll tell you which one it is. Whereas the state of South Carolina has yet to adopt a statewide hate crime legislation is only one of two states in the United States who have yet to adopt such protections for its citizens. Somebody called into question that language in the ordinance and pointed out there, there are, you know, in chapter five, offenses against civil rights. And I guess the suggestion was to change it to where, to say South Carolina does not adequately address hate crimes as opposed to saying it doesn't address them at all. And, and the commenter pointed out some areas in state law where it does appear that hate crimes are addressed. So yeah, that, that was the first comment and suggestion was to just say, whereas the city of Alapalms does not believe state law adequately addresses the severity of crimes motivated by hate, was the suggestion. The, the language was pulled, I think, from another municipality's ordinance and, and also from publications put on by the municipal association and the United States Justice Department's website that identifies both South Carolina and Wyoming as states that do not include specific bias categories like race, color, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity or disability in their state laws. So that was one of the comments received. One of the comments was just whether or not this ordinance will really deter crime and, and why are you treating a crime based on hate different than a crime based on jealousy, greed, something like that. The other one was that they thought the, that the use of saying that it's any crime motivated by hate that involves a violation of Title IX or anything else that's prohibited unlawful under the Code of Ordinances is broad and that we ought to focus on assault, vandalism and specific crime categories as opposed to the catchall, which is in the current ordinance. So those were some comments we received. Ultimately, the ordinance as written, I think, is legally compliant. These are probably more policy, political decisions and findings that whatever y'all as a body deem appropriate can be adopted. So I don't, I don't have a suggestion of like that, oh, yeah, I think we should change this or that. These are just thoughts that were brought up by somebody and not saying they're good thoughts, not saying they're bad thoughts. That's ultimately for y'all to decide.
Thank you, Mac. Blair?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I can't support this. It's, this is a constitutional issue. It impinges on free speech. Free speech is a fundamental check on governmental power, and I think this impinges on that. It's a slippery slope. We're making it illegal to disagree, and I just think it's something that we can't do. Secondly, as written, we're talking about words with the intent to intimidate because of the actual or perceived message from the person that the words are spoken to. By saying it's actual or perceived, it makes it extremely vague and extremely muddy so that anybody can say they perceived that somebody fussed at them because of their race, creed, color, religion, ancestry, et cetera. I just think it's, it's, it's a slippery slope and it's a, it's an erosion of our rights under both the state and federal constitutions.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I, the whereas clause, I know, I don't want to dwell on this for more than 30 seconds, but is it actually, since we cut and pasted this from another municipality, is what the resident suggested, does that appear to be more accurate? And if it's not offensive to the rest of the crew up here, I mean, I think I want to maybe suggest that we do amend the whereas to more accurately reflect that there is something on the books that's just inadequate to support the, to kind of support the message that we're trying to send.
So insert the term not adequately.
If that's.
Yeah, the suggestion was whereas the city of Alapalms does not believe state law adequately addresses the severity of crimes motivated by hate.
And we can make that change?
I think we can approve it as amended.
At this reading?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a finding. Yeah.
I would like to hear your thoughts though on what Blair mentioned, not on the constitutional piece, but on the wording here about perceived. Do you, do you believe that causes enough ambiguity? That's an issue that we should take perceived out or?
I mean, I think it is fine as written. The, the question in where this will come up is if you've got somebody that perceives something and it's, because obviously if somebody vandalizes a building and paints a swastika on it, that's an easy case. There's no sort of perceived thing. But if somebody looks at them the wrong way and they get charged with a hate crime, that's where we're going to run into issues.
But that's why I'm asking, do you recommend we take perceived out based on that from a legal standpoint?
You could take it out, but ultimately it's going to come to how, like, the facts of each specific case. And obviously, this is an ordinance, given the constitutional concerns that he raises, like, in my mind, it's got to be a pretty clear violation and motivated by hate. So this, I mean, there's a reason this didn't pass at the State House because of these very issues that y'all are talking about.
Go ahead, Jan.
I'd just like to say, I, I think it's, it's a, a good ordinance.
I'd just like to say I think it's a good ordinance, a good thing to add to our ordinances. And I've seen, we've seen the effect of it in Sullivan's Island where I think they have had some hate crime issues actually adjudicated. And it's not to throw people in jail or anything, but it's just to deter that, those kinds of activities in our, in our community.
I will say, and I said this in the committee meeting that we do, I really feel this is a state issue. And, you know, it's been for the state for numerous times, and you mentioned some reasons. I don't know why they've not passed it, but, you know, my, I voted for it to get to here, but I really feel this is a state issue in that if you really feel strongly about hate crimes, we should be putting pressure on our own state representatives, and the communities should put pressure on our state representatives to get something passed at the state level. This is really isn't a municipal issue, and it's really, if you look at it, it's, you know, it has to be associated with some other, and most likely is the, the citizen that wrote it said, it's going to be a misdemeanor that has some other $500 fine. It's, it's not a real deterrent. It's a message, I think, more than anything to our state representatives that they, they need to do something.
I mean, that is, that's the maximum penalty is $500 and up to 30 days. And that's, we're limited as a municipality in that sense, whereas the state certainly can have tougher crimes and penalties.
Yeah, and John, I completely agree with you, and we've sent the message to the state. We've had conversations with our lobbyists. We've had conversations with our representatives, and typically, it's been the upstate legislators that haven't had this, haven't made this happen. But it's on the county council agenda tonight for a first reading. There's been multiple municipalities and counties that have passed it because of the lack of action at the state level. Katie?
Does it, because of the whole lack of action at the state level, does it create a difficulty in enforcement for our officers? Is there any sort of conflict or anything like that? Or is this, is it just kind of separate?
It's just, it'd be a separate ordinance violation as opposed to a state law violation. So I don't, I don't think there's an issue enforcement-wise on that front.
Nicole, so we're going to have this motion as amended. Katie, you made the motion. You're good with this as amended?
Yes.
Changing this one whereas? Jan, as a second, you good with the change?
I agree.
Nicole, was that give you what you need? You good? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Next item is ordinance 2025-08, second reading. This is parking change at 41st Avenue in the new piped area. This is the second time we've had this conversation.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Is this a read on or is this... Oh, this is a second, sorry.
This is motion and second. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First reading, which would be by title only, is ordinance 2025-10, Gulf Cart Path designation.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No miscellaneous business, no need for executive session, there being no further business.
Motion to what?
Turn.
All those in favor say aye. Off record at 8:00.